Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. It is time for our Board of County Commissioners meeting. Can I please have order in the chamber? Thank you very much, I appreciate it. It's August 23rd, it's time to get together again, it's been awhile. I'm gonna ask for a roll call, please.
Commissioner Bernard. Commissioner Kerner.
Here.
Commissioner Moreno.
Here.
Commissioner McKinley.
Here.
Commissioner Sacks.
Here.
Mayor Weinroth.
I am here.
Vice Mayor Weiss.
Here.
Commissioner Moreno, would you please do the honors of the invocation, pledge of allegiance? Everybody, please rise.
Thank you. Dear God, as we gather here today, we pray that we are ever mindful of opportunities to render our service to fellow citizens and to our community. Keeping in mind always the enduring values of life, exerting our efforts in those areas and on those things upon which future generations can build with confidence. Let us continue to strive to make a better world. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Moreno, and reminding everybody today's election day. So if you haven't done so, please make an effort to cast your ballot before 7:00 PM tonight. Okay, with that, let's move on to the approval of the agenda. Do we have any additions, deletions, or substitutions?
Mayor, members of the board, on page 53K3, we have additions onto the motion, revised motion. Page 73, page 5A1 item, we have revisions to the motion as well. And then on page 85, 6F1 has been deleted for further staff review. That concludes the additions and deletions.
Commissioner Kerner, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. First and foremost, I'd like to get the board's approval to make a minor adjustment to the agenda, to reorder it, so that 6B1 and 6B4, which are all airport items, come immediately after the consent agenda, and then following the airport items, that 6F2, the University of Florida agenda item, follows immediately after that.
Alright, so if I am understanding your motion, you want to move 6B1, 6B4 behind 6F2, which would be UF2?
Correct. So we would take up the consent agenda, those airport items, then UF, and then back into the regular agenda, but wait, there's more, Mr. Mayor.
Wait, there's more?
I'm wondering what the board's position is on tabling the issue of the PACE agenda item for today to a later date, and with the instructions to staff to continue vetting and working through the issues.
And I have heard from the parties that they think that they could use a little more time to get this thing resolved. If I see no objections from my colleagues, we'll move to postpone that. Do we have a date certain on that? Mr. Monlaren, can you help me with that, as far as a date certain? September 13th?
Do you want Administrator Rutter to work with the people he's been working with and get a reasonable date, and then we'll schedule it accordingly?
Alright, fine, so we'll leave it as open-ended. Mr. Rutter, do you want to make a comment before we move forward?
I think a couple months, so we're looking at a date in October.
Alright, so we're gonna move this forward to our first meeting in October. All in favor, all opposed, show that it's going to be postponed to the first meeting in October. Alright, let's go back to the motion that Commissioner Kerner's made. Any other changes to the agenda?
Just very quickly, Mr. Mayor, for clarity, for the clerk's office, we temporarily postponed 6C1 to the October date.
That's correct.
The present motion that I'm making is on 6B1 through 6B4, and then 6F2, to reorder the agenda.
Okay, everybody clear on that? Commissioner McKinley, did you have something else you wanted to add on that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, under special presentations, I'd like to do the presentation for item 4A and item 4C at the same time, since it's the same recipients who will be receiving those proclamations, and also ask for a little flexibility, I'm waiting for the state attorney to arrive.
I see no objections to that, so we will make the necessary adjustments to special presentations as they're being read. Okay, seeing no, yes, Commissioner Moreno, you'd like to pull something from consent, I bet.
I would like to pull item L3 from consent. It's not often that we see government working so well with other governments, and I just like it to be out there in the public.
Can we do a point of order and approve the agenda before we do the consent?
Exactly.
Okay, so we're gonna go back to approving the amended agenda, all in favor, all opposed, show that is approved, seven to zero. Does the clerk have all that down properly?
Forgive me, Mayor, could you please clarify the maker and second around that?
The maker of it was Commissioner Kerner, Vice Weiss was my second.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. I think we have gotten all the administrative problems out of the way, so we are now gonna move the consent agenda without the item that has been removed by Commissioner Moreno, that's 3L3. Any comment cards on any of the consent agenda? Okay, seeing no consent, I still have lights on. Commissioner Moreno, you are, no? Okay, yours is off. Commissioner McKinley?
Yes, I'd like to pull item 3CC7.
Alright, wait a minute now. Give me that number again, 3?
CC7.
CC7?
CC.
CC7.
Like Cat Cat.
I apologize. Alright, so we are now making a motion to pull from the consent agenda, CC7, and 3L3. All in favor of approving the consent agenda? All of, again, wait a minute, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? I have a motion by Vice Weiss, second by Commissioner Sacks, all in favor, all opposed. It's approved, seven to zero. We haven't been here for a month.
We need to have any time off.
You know, really, we shouldn't take time off, we get out of the, yes. Alright, consent is out of the way, that means we're moving into special presentations, everybody? No, not yet.
We hear the items we pulled.
We have to do two items we pulled. Alright, we'll get this yet. Alright, 3L3, let's do that.
Mayor, good morning. With me, Mike Stahl, Deputy Erm Director in Scott Stone County Attorney's Office. We have a very brief presentation on the subject matter related to 3L3.
Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. So, before you agenda item 3L3, it's an agreement with the Florida Inland Navigation District that facilitates the removal of dredged material from the Peanut Island dredge material management area to construct the Bonefish Cove Project in Lake Worth Lagoon, which is one of the next restoration islands and living shorelines that Erm will be building within the Lake Worth Lagoon. These material removal agreements represent strong partnerships between government entities to realize the mutual benefits to remove dredged material from the DMMA, to create space for future dredging projects completed by, find, and/or the port. And it allows Erm to receive the benefits of cost-effective sand material that is used to build the restoration islands. Essentially, we move the sand from Peanut Island to the Bonefish Cove Project to build the islands. We have a long success of building these islands in the Lake Worth Lagoon, and utilizing these beneficial reuse partnerships are critical. Our Bonefish Cove Restoration Project will be built in the Lake Worth Lagoon in the vicinity of Lake Worth Beach. The BCC previously approved an agreement with the Army Corps for this project that secures $10 million in federal funding with the county's match of $3 million. These material removal agreements provides both sand sources and funding to construct the project. In short, we would not have these projects without these types of partnerships and agreements. The equivalent purchase price of this material alone, without loading or installation of the material, would exceed $8 million. Living shorelines have numerous benefits listed here, including water quality improvement, creates habitat for wildlife, provides natural infrastructure to build resilience into our coastline, and recreational opportunities. And then finally, Erm would like to thank all of our partners, without whom we could not do this work. So, thank you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Moreno, you're recognized.
The only reason I pull this again is because this is such a, this is a perfect example of our government working with other governments for the benefit of all, and I much appreciate it, and thank you for your brief presentation.
We are happy to.
Very good. Commissioner Moreno would like to make a motion. Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Moreno to approve, so either second. Second by Commissioner McKinley. All in favor, all opposed, show that is approved, seven to zero. Thank you very much for the presentation. Commissioner McKinley, you pulled item CC7.
Yes, I did, and not for any other reason except to thank the sheriff. These are the grants that he is awarding from the Law Enforcement Trust Fund. One of the items that he is funding is a $25,000 contribution to Mothers Against Murder Association. As you know, this was the subject of a couple of spotlights in the media about the need that this organization had to continue their operations, and the wonderful service that they provide the community. So I just wanted to go on record in thanking the sheriff and his team when they select these grants. I know they have a lot of competition, but to be able to help this one out in particular was a good thing, I just wanted to highlight that. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll move approval of item 3CC7.
Thank you, Commissioner McKinley, and Vice Weiss has seconded your motion, and just to make another comment on that, I mean, the sheriff periodically makes distributions from his Law Enforcement Trust Fund. This is an allocation of $742,000 for about three dozen nonprofits in our community, and we thank the sheriff for that. With that being said, all in favor, all opposed, show that is being approved by a seven to zero vote. Okay, I think we are now done with the consent agenda, so now we're gonna move on to our special presentations. Commissioner McKinley, are you ready to do the first two?
Yes, I'll go ahead and do that. I understand, I got word that our state attorney was on live broadcast till 3:30 in the morning, and won't be able to join us this morning, so I'll go ahead and do mine.
Very good. And then Commissioner Sax, you're gonna be after those two.
Let's see, if I could ask Nancy McConnell from Rebel Recovery, and John Hulick, our wonderful county drug czar, and also I believe we have Lauren Zuckman from Be Well Palm Beach County, Marsha Martino from NAMI of Palm Beach County, Alexa Lee from the Behavioral Health Coalition of Palm Beach County, and Natalie Kenton from the Department of Health. Good morning. We are going to be doing two proclamations, so bear with me, they go hand in hand as I read these two different proclamations. The first one is declaring September 2022 as National Recovery Month. Whereas behavioral health is an essential part of health and overall wellness, the prevention of mental and substance use disorders works, treatment is effective, and people recover in our area and around the nation. Whereas preventing and overcoming mental and substance use disorders is essential to achieving healthy lifestyles, both physically and emotionally. Whereas we must encourage relatives and friends of people with mental and substance use disorders to implement preventative measures, recognize the signs of a problem, and guide those in need to appropriate treatment and recovery support services. Whereas the Palm Beach County Board of County Commissioners is leading efforts to establish a person-centered, recovery-oriented system of care with partners throughout the county to help people achieve recovery and improve the quality of care as well as long-term recovery outcomes. The Florida Department of Health in Palm Beach County has made important contributions addressing the county's opioid epidemic through its overdose data to action innovative surveillance project that aims to increase the surveillance of suspected drug overdoses, and to use that data to drive action, policy change, and community outreach. And whereas to help more people achieve and sustain long-term recovery, Palm Beach County invites all residents to participate in National Recovery Month. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County, Florida, assembled today, that September in our county is hereby proclaimed National Recovery Month. In addition to that one, we are also declaring August 31st, 2022, as International Overdose Awareness Day. Whereas every year on August 31st, International Overdose Awareness Day is recognized in communities around the world to remember those lives that have been lost, and to raise awareness about risks of overdose. It never ceases to choke me up. Whereas Substance Use Disorders recognizes a disease of the brain by the American Medical Association, and the stigma associated with this disease must be eliminated in order to encourage those with substance use disorder to seek treatment as well as long-term recovery. Drug overdoses are the leading cause of death for U.S. adults ages 18 to 45, which is more than COVID, car accidents, cancer, and suicide combined. Whereas by acknowledging all those who have been affected by substance use disorder, we help the general public understand its effects. Palm Beach County continues to experience alarming opioid drug overdose deaths totaling 527 last year alone. The Palm Beach County Board of County Commissioners has increased funding and staffing, is coordinating evidence-based strategies, and has led efforts to establish this person-centered recovery-oriented system of care with partners throughout the county. The Board of County Commissioners was the first county in the state of Florida to establish a syringe access program in an effort to increase public health and safety, as well as build a bridge to treatment and recovery support services for program participants. And whereas the Florida Department of Health continues to address the opioid epidemic through its overdose data to action innovative surveillance project. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County, Florida, assembled today, that August 31st in our county is hereby proclaimed International Overdose Awareness Day. It's been my honor to present these proclamations to you on an annual basis during my time on the county commission, and given that today is election day, I do hope that whomever succeeds me, I would love to live in a world where we never had to present these proclamations. And to all the lives lost, including those in my family, both my work family and my personal family, I want to thank you all for your service and your commitment to this county. I would like to thank Sheriff Bradshaw and his team for putting Narcan in the hands of his deputies. I'd like to thank you for continuing to push back on the unbelievably insensitive comments that some people in the public make about those that are suffering from this disorder that has been recognized by the medical community as a medical disease. You guys have an uphill battle on that still to this day, despite all the work that we've done. It's getting better, but we still have a long way to go. Just, you guys are heroes in this county, and I've loved working with you. So I'm not sure whomever is speaking first, but I'll turn the mic over. Stacy, I'm sorry, I didn't know you were here this morning.
Thank you so much, I appreciate your allowing me to speak. This is also very emotional, I wanted to thank the mayor and all the commissioners for hearing us and for helping us fight. I remember, Melissa, when I went to the, one of the first opioid meetings that was in the library on Summit, and that's how I ended up getting involved in all of this, and always, you know, watching you, and just, you know, in awe of you and how hard you have fought with our community for this, so. And your team, absolutely. So again, I just wanted to thank the mayor, and I just wanted to say a couple of things, you know, this is a very important day, it's a milestone. This proclamation states that on August 31st of every year, International Overdose Awareness Day is recognized in communities around the world to remember those whose lives have been lost, and to raise awareness about the detrimental risks of overdose. For those we have lost in this war, this is your voice, to honor and to remember you, as well as their families and loved ones. We will never forget, we must never forget. Thank you to all that made this possible, and that you all will never forget. As advocates, we revel in a moment like this. For everyone who has been touched by addiction, we are fully aware this disease will break your heart, spirit, and hope. This gives us hope, this gives us a voice. This proclamation is so very necessary for awareness, education, and advocacy. I already thanked you, and I already talked about the library, and I also wanted to say a very heartfelt thank you to Rick Bradshaw and PBSO for hearing us. Even though it took a long time, he heard us, and this is what advocacy is all about, and I am honored to speak on behalf of those who aren't here, and those who are still struggling. And I know for me, and for all the people that I've advocated with, we're not done yet, but thank you very much for allowing me to come here and speak.
Commissioner Sacks.
Thank you very much, Mayor. If I could have Tonya Davis Johnson, the Director of the Office of Equal Opportunity, come forward, as well as Grassford Smith, Board Chairman of the Black Chamber of Commerce of Palm Beach County. If you could come forward, please, and let me read for everyone to hear this proclamation, that we are declaring August 2022 as Palm Beach County Black Business Month. Whereas National Black Business Month was founded in 2004 by Frederick Jordan Senior and John William Templeton, to recognize the contributions of black-owned businesses throughout the county, and to encourage their development. And whereas the United States Minority Business Development Agency estimates that there are 2.6 million black-owned businesses in the United States, generating approximately $150 billion in annual receipts. And whereas promoting and supporting black-owned businesses helps to close the racial wealth gap, diminish income inequality, and provide opportunities for social and economic development. And whereas it is important to support and encourage black-owned businesses in an effort to reduce barriers and increase viability and sustainability. Whereas Palm Beach County is committed to supporting black-owned businesses, including startups and established entities. And whereas Palm Beach County is home to hundreds of black-owned businesses that generate jobs and careers to residents throughout the county. Whereas August is recognized as National Black Business Month, and whereas Palm Beach County values black-owned businesses and seeks to celebrate their growth, development, and success in the community. Therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County, Florida, assembled in regular session this 23rd day of August 2022, that August 2022 in Palm Beach County is hereby proclaimed Palm Beach County Black Business Month. Congratulations.
Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the commission. Thank you so much for your continued support of the Office of Equal Business Opportunity and the work that we do on behalf of the local small businesses. It is our mission, our desire, and drive to make sure that local small businesses, specifically local black businesses, have an opportunity to do business with Palm Beach County. In that vein, we offer services for entrepreneurship, we help individuals who wish to come in and discuss the starting of a business, and those businesses that are existing, we help them grow and develop. I want to thank County Administrator Baker for her continued support, and the sponsor of this proclamation, Commissioner Sacks. Joining me today is Mr. Grassford Smith, he is the President of the Black Chamber, and he'd like to offer a few comments.
Thank you, and good morning. Even though I'm a lawyer, I'm gonna be very brief. I want to just thank the county for seeing it not robbery to recognize Black Business Month in this way, and I see Mayor James to my left, who did the same thing for the city of West Palm Beach. And we take this very seriously, I know Ms. Johnson does a phenomenal job for us through the Office of Equal Business Opportunity, and we want equal business opportunity here, and we believe that if black businesses thrive, the entire county thrives. So I just want to make sure that that point is clear. I want to also, and I'd be remiss if I did not recognize our past leadership, Bruce Lewis, who many of you know, he ran the chamber for a number of years and put us in a position that we've been able to support our black-owned businesses here, and they are thriving. So, look forward to our continued partnership, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner McKinley?
One final invitation, please join us at the drive-in on August 31st, we'll be at John Prince Park. It is in celebration of Black Business Month, we'll be discussing the state of black business. Joining us will be Mr. Alan Williams, he's a Deputy Director of HUD, he will bring remarks from the federal level, and Senator Bobby Powell will bring comments from the state level. So join us at John Prince Park on August 31st, 6:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And while they're getting their pictures, I wanted to welcome and acknowledge Mayor James, thank you very much for being here today, and also acknowledge and welcome our former County Administrator Bob Weissman, so it's great to see you.
Thank you, Mayor. To me, this is the best part of what we do in business, I enjoy this the most. Okay, if I could have Michelle Demone step forward, and while she's coming, let me tell you about Michelle Demone. Michelle, we don't have enough time to tell you everything about Michelle, and we're in polite company, too, so I better be good. Michelle is honored to serve on the Local Palm Beach County NOW, which is a national organization of women, as she has tremendous respect for the women who blaze paths before her to secure equal opportunities for all women. She will continue to carry the torch to protect women's rights as women reproductive rights are being threatened. Michelle will be a strong, wise, and vocal advocate for equality as she serves on that board. This proclamation declares August 26, 2022, as Women's Equality Day. Whereas women in the United States have continuously worked to gain full rights and privileges, whereas women in every state, culture, and religious group have worked to secure women's right to vote, and whereas more than 100 years ago, the women of this nation won a major victory in the struggle for women's equality in the passage of the 19th Amendment to the United States Constitution. Whereas the amendment represents a major milestone in the women's suffrage movement, granting 26 million citizens, 26 million citizens the right to vote in 1920, and we've never looked back. Whereas in 1971, by joint resolution, Congress designated August 26, the date the 19th Amendment was certified as Women's Equality Day. Whereas the Palm Beach County National Organization for Women recognizes August 26 as Women's Equality Day, and whereas Palm Beach County recognizes and supports this important milestone in American history, and the commitment to empowering and uplifting the voices of women. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County, Florida, assembled in regular session this 23rd day of August 2022, that August 26, 2022, in Palm Beach County, is hereby proclaimed Women's Equality Day. Let me just say, as I present this to Michelle Demone, that this was specially requested by Ann Gannon, who has been a leader for many, many years in women's equality and women's rights. So, and if anybody from the board would like to join me in this, given the proclamation for Women's Equality Day, I would certainly welcome you. Thank you.
I just want to say a few words. I couldn't come to the chamber without saying a few words. I want to thank Vice Mayor, or excuse me, the Mayor, Vice Mayor, and the Commissioners, as well as the strong women Commissioners that are on this board. Women's equality is extremely important, especially in 2022, as women's rights are under attack, and taking a under attack and taking us back 50 years. So I take this personally, and you said it very well. But I want to say something that's really important to me, and it's one of my personal goals, persevering forward, is the, the best way for women to be equal is when a woman is firm, and she gives you a firm handshake, and she's sharp, and she's smart, and she uses her mind. Don't ridicule her. She's not the B-word. She's being strong, like men and the women before her. And the other thing that I'm going to do before I leave this earth is to encourage women warriors, to encourage other women, and to celebrate women. We don't need to cut women down because she wore something pretty or because she's cuter than the next one. We need to celebrate one another. And when we do that, we will kick men's butts, and we will lead this nation to a better place. And that's what I wanted to say today. And Commissioner Sacks, you said it very well, and I thank you. I thank you, Commissioner Moreno and Commissioner McKinley for being leaders, and I celebrate women every single day. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Come on over here. Let's all celebrate Women's Equality Day. And I think you got a couple of ladies at home, too. We're all, we're all richer because of the women.
Are you coming down, Mayor?
I'm coming down.
What do your socks look like today?
We got happy socks.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm coming to your office. You haven't seen my email.
All right, thank you, Mayor. And it's certainly wonderful to be back in this chamber, celebrating very important issues in our community. And so I'm delighted to invite to the podium the Yogi team, if you will, can come on down. We have a special proclamation for K-9 Yogi today. He's officially going to be a good boy. I'm doing well. How are you, sir? Thank you for being here today. And on behalf of State Attorney Dave Ehrenberg and other members of the community that so much appreciate the service that Yogi gives to this community, along with you and your team, we're going to declare August 23, 2022, as K-9 Yogi Day here in Palm Beach County. Whereas K-9 Yogi is a certified drug-detection dog imprinted for illegal prescription and synthetic narcotics, which are commonly abused. And whereas families throughout the nation entrust their loved ones to recovery centers for treatment and help with drug addiction. And whereas K-9 Yogi plays an integral part in the recovery of loved ones by searching for and detecting illegal narcotics smuggled into recovery centers by patients and other parties. And whereas without the important role that K-9 Yogi plays in the recovery of those wishing to defeat their addiction, access, and temptation of illegal narcotics smuggled into recovery centers may hinder recovery. And whereas K-9 Yogi and his handler, Paul, are responsible for 78 illegal drug seizures to date, thus possibly saving the lives of hundreds. And whereas living sober is ultimately determined by the desire of those addicted, K-9 Yogi plays an important part of the strong support system that is vital for recovery. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County, Florida, assembled in regular session this 23rd day of August 2022, that August 23, 2022, in Palm Beach County is hereby proclaimed K-9 Yogi Day. And Paul, I'll ask you to make a couple of comments on behalf of your team and Yogi, but I'll say very briefly that I've served in a lot of areas in government in my time, and I've been very thankful for every position that I've held. But one of the most amazing experiences was as a law enforcement officer, to be able to serve with the K-9 teams at the Police Department. And I had the opportunity to serve with Kaiser and Nico, two German Shepherd drug-detection dogs that played an incredible role in the safety of not just the community, but also officer safety. But it's incredible to think about the diversity of these roles that canines play. And in this instance, we have K-9 Yogi, who, and we all know Commissioner McKinley's been a leader on this issue and has discussed it with such intellect and articulation about the difficulties of recovery, and that it really takes a community to help someone through that process. But I don't think many people realize that actually our K-9 friends and pals assist in that recovery process as well. So we're delighted to have you here today. We're delighted to have Yogi, and we'd be honored to have you say some words, sir.
Thank you, everybody, all the Commissioners, everyone. Thank you for your service, Mayor. Kind of speechless, you know, when we heard about this. You know, I started this out about five years ago. I was doing some volunteer work at a sober home down in Lake Worth, and they, the medical examiner's truck was up the street, and I was in the process of getting him, you know? And they were taking a young boy out in a body bag. And, you know, the light bulb went off on my head, and I said, you know, let me call Eddie up, who was a dog trainer up in Jersey, who had Yogi for me at the time. He was doing some work with him. And I said, hey, let me know if you think Yogi make a good drug dog. So he said, give me a few weeks, and I'll call you back. So he did. And he said, not only will he be a good drug dog, he's going to be the best you've ever seen. So the wheel went in motion. And, you know, I started out, it was just about saving one life, you know, in these sober homes and the recovery community. I've been, you know, in recovery for over 35 years myself. And so, you know, I'm very passionate about it. You know, formerly did interventions all over the country. And so I put it, put him together, and then I added a female. And then from there, we've had 16 puppies since. So right now, we have three more dogs in school, which are his, two of his daughters and his son. So, and Alexa is joining. Speaking of women equality, right? She's, she's going to be joining the team. She's in school, and she's going to be handling one or two of the dogs herself. So we're putting a team together to hit the streets, you know, just to make a difference.
Does she want to make any comments?
Who?
Did any of your other team members want to make any comments?
You want to make a comment? Come on.
I just want to say I'm grateful for this opportunity to work with Yogi and his son, Mishka. I'm training with him right now, and I'm actually in recovery myself. So being sober and saving more lives is very important to me, and I'm very passionate about this job. So thank you.
While they're getting their pictures over there, I'm going to ask Nicole Farley to come on up. And if your mom's here, have her come up with you. You know, as Commissioner Sacks said a few minutes ago, this is really the high point for me of these commission meetings, when we're doing these presentations, when we're doing recognition of the residents in our community, most of the times for nonprofits. But today, we're bringing Nicole up here because of something that happened to you and something, the way that you've impacted someone else's life. Nicole, as I'm reading from an article, said, "What was supposed to be a relaxing day at the beach turned into rescue mission when junior biology major Nicole Farley saved one man from drowning." Farley, who works as a lifeguard at a pool with two friends, when she spotted a man in distress at the South Beach Park in Boca Raton, a gentleman that she estimated to be about 60 to 70 years old. Today, we're recognizing Nicole for the act of heroism, of going out into the water and saving someone's life in a situation where unfortunately, there was no one else but her to save this person's life. Nicole demonstrated extreme strength and determination in overcoming a very dangerous situation, fighting a riptide, to get that swimmer back to shore and saving his life. Nicole, we are so proud of you, and I'm really very proud to be able to give you the certificate of commendation on behalf of my colleagues here at the Board of County Commissioners.
Thank you. I would like to just say a couple of words. Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, and guests. I'm very honored and grateful to be joining you this morning. I am humbled to receive this award in recognition of my efforts on March 19, 2022, with another citizen of Boca Raton. I never expected to encounter the events that unfolded on that day, but I guess God had me in the right place at the right time. While I am receiving this award today, I want to take a moment to recognize the countless individuals and city workers that assisted in the events on that day. It is truly a testament to the strong community we have in Boca Raton. I am truly proud to call myself a citizen of this great city. Thank you so much.
All right, back to work. We are going to start now with our public hearing. This is on Housing and Economic Development. On your agenda, it's Item 5A1. There's a revised motion, which is basically just inserting the word industrial development into the motion. Do I have a motion to approve? Thank you, Commissioner. You're always there to help me. I have a motion by Commissioner Bernard, seconded by the Vice Mayor. All in favor, all opposed? The motion to receive and file has been approved. We will now move on to 5A1. Do I have a motion to approve 5A1?
I have my light on before you make that motion. Yes, thank you. I need to disclose a voting conflict, Item 5A1. The approval of the application of the South Florida Fair and Palm Beach County Expositions for the issuance of the county's Industrial Development Revenue Bonds Series 2022 in a principal amount not to exceed $6 million. I sit on the Board of Directors for the South Florida Fair as an ex officio, which is unpaid. I've been told by the county attorney's office it'd be a conflict for me to vote on this agenda. And in such, in order to comply with the Code of Ethics, I will abstain and not participate in any discussion regarding this matter. And Mr. Mayor, I can't, I can't guarantee that I've never said yea or nay when the Board of Directors Chair has called for a vote. So until I clarify whether or not I am a voting member, I will abstain from voting on this item.
Very good. So we'll show you as recusing yourself from this, and you'll file the necessary form with the clerk. Thank you. Okay, I'm told we have one speaking card. Does anybody need a presentation? Should we go right to the public comment? We're going to go right to public comment. I'm going to ask our illustrious former County Administrator Bob Weissman to come to the microphone. Always great to see you, sir.
Good to see you all. Thank you very much for having me today. It's a, I want to speak to you today as Chairman of the Board of Trustees of the South Florida Fair, who are all volunteer representatives of this community. I'm joined by Fair CEO Vicky Churis and our legal counsel Lance Fuchs. You have a staff recommendation for approval today, and we appreciate the quick staff work that allowed this to happen. The item will allow the fair to again refinance existing fair debt that the county issued in 2000 and again refinance in 2010 on behalf of the fair at no expense to county taxpayers and to save us hundreds of thousands of dollars. But the wording of the item refers to it as an industrial revenue bond, and I want there to be a public record as to what the fair is, because we don't consider ourselves an industry, certainly. I want to highlight for you that the fair is a quasi-governmental nonprofit entity authorized by state law, and that state law allows and encourages fairs to have financial cooperation and support from their counties for public purposes. The fair and the county have been cooperating for the benefit of the public for hundreds, for 100 years. The fair is the site of the county's special needs shelter, emergency distribution center for the state and federal governments during emergencies, and FPNL uses our site for hurricane response. Recently, fair property was used as a health department COVID test site. The fair cancels all activities that would cause a conflict with the county declaration of emergency needs. The fair, of course, provides year-round public attractions and activities for hundreds of thousands of your constituents and visitors, but we also have a special statutory responsibility to enhance agricultural education and support this industry, which is, of course, very important to Palm Beach County. I want to thank all of you for your support of the fair previously, and particularly Commissioner McKinley as the ex officio member of our board. She's done a lot of work for us. Hope you'll all join us in the fair in January. It's going to be Dino, D-I-N-O, Mike. There will be many other events before then, so please come out and join us. Thank you for your consideration today.
Thank you, Mr. Weissman. It's again, great to see you. January, do you have the actual dates for the fair?
13 through 29.
Terrific. We'll be there. Thank you. Okay, I'm going to look for a motion to approve. I have a motion by Vice Weiss, seconded by Commissioner Moreno, showing Commissioner McKinley not voting. All in favor, all opposed? Show that as a six to zero vote. Okay, we're going to move on now to Item 5A2. This is a staff recommendation of a motion to approve a first reading to advertise for an adoption hearing on September 13, 2022. Do I have anybody who needs to have a presentation? Seeing nobody, I have a motion by Vice Mayor Weiss, seconded by Commissioner Kerner. All in favor, all opposed? Show that has been approved, seven to zero. Thank you. We're going to move on now to Item 5B1. This is on the conversion therapy, and we've had discussion on this before. We are going to have a vote on whether to now take this ordinance off the books. It's been moved by Commissioner Kerner, seconded by Vice Mayor Weiss. All in favor, all opposed? Show this has been, seven to zero. You keeping up with me, clerk? Okay. All right, we're now up to 5C1. This is on tow trucks. We're going to have a public hearing on this, and we're going to do two items concurrently. 6A1 is going to be handled right after 5C1, and then we're going to move into the reordered agenda. Mr. Bonlaren, do you want to make a brief presentation?
Just brief introductory remarks. You have before you an extensive presentation. I think we've spent time with each of you on. I do want to thank our team, particularly Rob Schelt, our Director of Community of Consumer Affairs for Palm Beach County, for working tirelessly with industry on both of the items that are before you today. We have had, over the last eight years or so, a number of factors that have contributed to some of the rising costs in this industry. And we had a removed earlier on from this ordinance, an index that's been placed back into it going forward that will allow to index to the CPI going forward to help adjust for some of the costs of inflation, gasoline, labor, insurance. This is, item has gone both before the Consumer Affairs Hearing Board on June 15, and the League of Cities Board of Directors. And I want to thank Richard Radcliffe and their board for moving this forward with no objection, as well as the Consumer Affairs Hearing Board as well for their efforts. And so staff is available for any questions or to give a more in-depth presentation if required.
Commissioner Bernard, I know that you were a negative vote last time around on this. Any comments you want to make?
No, I don't have any comments, but I will, I'm still a no.
Okay, very good. So we're going to, I'm looking for a motion to approve. A sec, I have a motion by Vice Mayor Weiss, seconded by Commissioner Sacks. Seeing no further discussion, all in favor, all opposed? Show that as a six to one vote. Commissioner Bernard is a vote no. Okay, we're going to move on to now to Item 6A1. We have, again, it's a resolution of the Board of County Commissioners establishing a new schedule of maximum rates for non-consent towing and immobilization services fees and fines, establishing minimum insurance limits and repealing and replacing Resolution R Can I have a motion to approve? I have a motion by Vice Mayor Weiss, seconded by Commissioner Sacks. All in favor, all opposed? I have a six to one vote. Commissioner Bernard is negative. We're going to move. Commissioner Kerner?
I apologize, Mayor. On 5C1, there are two non-speaking cards in On 5C1, there are two non-speaking cards in support of the ordinance or the resolution, Aaron Kokuzo from Priority Towing and Leilani Burchard. So I apologize for not calling them.
Okay, but they are non-speaking?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay. Then we will proceed. All right. Now, we are moving item 6B1. All right, so this is my favorite. If anybody's been watching these meetings in the past, you will know that pursuant to Chapter 332 Florida statutes effective October 1st, 2020, a governing body of a commercial service airport may not approve purchases of contractual services in excess of a category five threshold of $325,000. We have four items before us. Ms. Beebe is...I'm not going to even let her sit down because we're going to try to move this forward.
So moved on 6B1.
6B1, janitorial contract. Do I have a motion to approve? I have a motion by Commissioner Sacks, seconded by Vice Mayor Weiss. All in favor, 6B1. Opposed, we have a seven to zero vote.
So moved on 6B2, Mayor.
I have a motion by Commissioner Kerner to approve the planning and design contract, which is 6B2. I have a second by the Vice Mayor. All in favor, all opposed. Show that is approved as a seven to zero vote.
So moved on 6B3.
We are on 6B3 now. It's a general consulting agreement with Ricondo and Associates. I have a motion by Commissioner Kerner. I have a second by Commissioner Marino. All in favor, all opposed. Show that is approved, seven to zero.
Salute.
Finally, we have a motion by Commissioner Kerner to approve 6B4. It's a contract for grant agreement number 3-12-0085-071-2022, and several others. I am looking for a second. I have a second by Commissioner McKinley. All in favor, all opposed. Show this is approved, seven to zero. Always nice to see you in our chambers, Laura. Go back to work. Okay, now this brings us to the main event, 6F2. Our friends from UF are here, I'm sure, and I guess we are going to have... Do we have a presentation, Isame?
We do.
We do, okay.
Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioners. Isame Agala, Director of Facilities Development and Operations. With me today is Purbhi Bhugaiya, Director of Property and Real Estate Management Division, and Chief Assistant County Attorney Howard Falcon. Through this item, staff is seeking to obtain approval from the Board of a Development and Conveyance Agreement with the University of Florida Foundation for the planning, development, design, permitting, construction, operation, maintenance of an educational campus, commonly referred to as the urban campus, in downtown West Palm Beach. As you may recall, on August 24, 2021, the mayors of Palm Beach County and the city of West Palm Beach held a joint press conference to announce a potential economic and educational initiative for the region. The initiative provides for the conveyance of real estate owned by the county, the city, and third parties within the area historically known as the Government Hill in West Palm Beach to the University of Florida for the planning, design, and construction of a urban educational campus to offer graduate, professional, and executive programs. On December 7, 2021, county staff provided a status report regarding the collaboration with UF and the city towards the development of the urban campus. On February 8, 2022, the Board approved a conceptual term sheet and authorized staff to proceed with negotiations towards finalizing the agreement. At the time of approval of said term sheet, agreements had been reached on most material terms, but two remained that require further negotiation, the extent of reversionary rights to be retained by the county, and the definition of allowable private uses in county-owned properties. For purposes of location context only, allow us to share that the area commonly referred to as Government Hill and where the urban campus is going to be located. Consists of three blocks in West Palm Beach, east of Tamarine Avenue, from Clemente Street to the north, to Forest Street to the south. Each block is currently owned in large part by the state, county, and city governments, respectively. The county's current holdings on Government Hill amount to approximately five acres with a combined simple interest market value of $42,72,500, as per the average of two separate appraisals obtained by county staff in October 2021. The city's holdings amount to approximately two acres, and private holdings related to your urban campus initiative amount approximately to 4.5 acres. With the benefit of this general overview, allow us to briefly summarize the material terms of the Development and Conveyance Agreement. Please note that a comprehensive summary of key terms is included as attachment three to the agenda item. The developer agreement, the developer and conveyance agreement is to be entered between the county and the University of Florida Foundation for the planning, design, permitting, construction, operation, maintenance of the urban campus. University of Florida may rely on its affiliates to carry its responsibilities under the agreement. The list of UF's affiliates, along with a brief description of each type of entity, is included as attachment four to the agenda item. The agreement defines and builds upon the concept of public educational use, to include uses by the university related to the provision of academic programming or offerings on the urban campus, which extends without limitation to classrooms, offices, parking, food services, recreational facilities, and open space. The definition of urban campus is at the core of the agreement. As can be seen on this slide, the same is fairly comprehensive. I do not intend to read it, but will like to call the Board's attention to the five key elements that are highlighted. In summary, the urban campus is defined as a University of Florida public educational campus located in downtown West Palm Beach that will be developed and operated in accordance with the agreement and which may include auxiliary enterprises as defined under Florida statutes, incidental facilities such as offices, parks, and open spaces, and other public and private uses meant to service the campus as defined under the agreement and which the University of Florida may develop directly or through public-private partnerships. The urban campus will deliver academic programming through a novel framework, which may deviate from the more traditional approach currently in place at other University of Florida campuses and colleges. The University of Florida intends to achieve this goal by providing for close engagement with the private sector, assisting and complementing the delivery of academic programming. Solely for said purposes is the county considering the conveyance of the properties to the University of Florida. Per the Declaration of Development Intent, University of Florida acknowledges and accepts that it is the county's intent in entering into the agreement that once conveyed, the properties will remain under the ownership and control of the University of Florida or its affiliates for public educational uses. The agreement requires the University of Florida to prepare a master plan consistent with the Declaration of Development Intent, which at a minimum will address academic offerings, community engagement, capital plan, funding plan, project schedule, and any other applicable requirements resulting from the Florida statutes. UF will have 12 months to complete the master plan with the right to extend by up to an additional 12 months. In other words, two years to complete the master plan, which will then be subject to review and approval by the Board. Staff must note that typically the evaluation and recommendation of a potential conveyance of county-owned land is preceded by a master planning process defining the ambition, programming, capital needs, schedule, operating conditions, and other details. UF has indicated that to proceed with said planning effort, it must first obtain rights to the real estate holdings. Therefore, the DCA, the Development and Conveyance Agreement, provides for completion of the master plan after approval of the agreement. A full understanding of the scope, offerings, and magnitude of the urban campus effort will then be possible when the master plan is completed and submitted to the county for review and approval. The county's right to review will extend to the entirety of the urban campus to ensure that development intent under the DCA is met, but its approval rights will be limited to the development taking place on the properties, which approval shall not be reasonably withheld. Future revisions to a master plan will also be subject to county review and approval under certain conditions that are detailed in the agreement. As we know, the county's real estate holdings on Government Hill continue to support the county's Community Services Department. County staff will have an initial term of 12 months to relocate community services with the right to extend by up to an additional 12 months. In other words, we will have the two years to pursue relocation. And please note that this coincides with the two years that UF will have to develop the master plan for the urban campus. The agreement provides that UF and county staff will reconvene and evaluate options in the event that relocation of the Community Services Department is determined to be unfeasible. If conveyance of the properties precedes relocation of community services, then UF will grant the county a nominal rent lease to allow for the county to continue to occupy the building until relocation is achieved. Any such lease will result in a day-for-day extension of the development timelines as set for in the master plan. In February 2022, this Board authorized staff to expedite procurement of the professional services that will be required to proceed with the design of the new Community Services building, which will be located on the county's 45th Street complex. We proceeded accordingly. The RFP was advertised, proposals were received, and final selection is scheduled to take place on September 6, 2022. If all goes well, we expect to return to the Board for approval of the resulting contract in November, October, November of this year. The Development and Conveyance Agreement includes several provisions related to the design, development, permitting, funding of the urban campus, some of which we would like to highlight. UF will be solely responsible and will bear all costs for the design, development, permitting, construction, operation, and maintenance of the urban campus. The county will be granted naming opportunities commensurate with the value associated with the properties. The properties will not be designated as transfer development, right, sending, or receiving sites without county approval. Existing development intensities will not be exceeded without county approval, and a 40% traffic reduction goal for daily traffic trips will be implemented. Modifications to street networks surrounding the urban campus will require a sign-and-seal comprehensive traffic analysis as county staff seeks to avoid detrimental effects to the county's intermodal transit center and to the county's operations in downtown West Palm Beach. Although the agreement is not subject to the county's equal business opportunity ordinance, UF has agreed to collaborate with the county's OEO staff to facilitate small women minority vendor involvement in the development. The urban campus will not include travel and leisure hospitality facilities and amenities, and no inpatient outpatient medical facilities are to be constructed on the county's properties. Lastly, residential units on the properties will provide for the sole occupancy by students, faculty, and/or employees of the urban campus and/or other public educational, higher educational institutions located in Palm Beach County. One of the two critical items that remain open in February of this year, when this Board approved the conceptual term sheet, was the definition of allowable private uses on the properties. County staff and UF representatives were able to reach an understanding as to the extent of said private uses, which has now been captured in the recommended agreement. Per the DCA, uses will be limited to those that exist in support of or in collaboration with the public educational use and will not exceed 40% of the aggregate square footage of all buildings constructed on the county's properties. Private uses in support of the public educational use are goods and services which are considered amenities for the benefit of the urban campus. A coffee shop or a print shop are both good examples of a private use in support of the public educational use. On the other hand, for a private use to be in collaboration with the public educational use, it must be meant to enhance and/or supplement the urban campus educational offering. The DCA provides five types of such private uses: internships, classes, and/or targeted learning experiences, research opportunities, access to specialized equipment or technologies, and incurator spaces. Incidental facilities such as housing, food services, and parking will not be considered private uses regardless of the same being developed and operated directly by UF or through a public-private partnership. The agreement provides that conveyance of the properties will be at no cost to UF, that the county will release its mineral rights interest in the county's properties and the city's properties, the latter as a result of the city's properties having been originally owned by the county, and that UF will have 180 days to complete the associated due diligence, at which time UF will need to issue the county a notice to proceed or the agreement will automatically terminate. To proceed with closing, UF must meet a series of conditions precedent. It must have completed the master plan, and the same must have been approved by the Board. It must have acquired the other real estate holdings required for the development of the urban campus. The due diligence needs to be completed, and the notice to proceed must have been received by the county. UF needs to secure the required financing to construct the urban campus, and lastly, it must certify that the permits for Phase 1 are obtainable in the ordinary course of business. The latter represents a slight deviation from the Board-approved conceptual term sheet, and please allow me to explain. Under the agreement, Phase 1 will be the first-in-time vertical construction on the properties comprising a minimum of 50,000 square feet of enclosed space for the delivery of academic programs consistent with the public educational use. As per the Board-approved conceptual term sheet, staff had included a condition precedent for closing on the properties received by UF of the permits required to commence construction. UF has maintained that it could not enter into the DCA with said condition proceeding as it will result in UF having to front fund the sign of the urban campus rather than to rely on a P3 arrangement that it intends to pursue. To achieve Board direction, the DCA has drafted no longer requires that permits be obtained as a condition precedent, but rather to confirm that all permits and approval required for Phase 1 are obtainable in the ordinary course of business. The final condition precedent can be waived by UF and provides for obtaining all other permits, approvals, consents, and agreements for the development and operation of the urban campus as deemed necessary by UF. The University of Florida will have four years to meet the conditions precedent to closing. As previously mentioned, back in February of 2022, staff had identified two topics that remain open at the time and which needed resolution in order for an agreement to materialize. The first one was the definition of allowable private uses on the properties, which we have already discussed. The second one was the extent of the reversionary rights that will assist the county post-conveyance. Although county staff and UF representatives were able to reach agreements on this topic, staff must note that the extent of the reversionaries in the rights in the Development and Conveyance Agreement is limited compared to our typical practice. Typically, the county has reversionary rights that extend beyond completion of development and construction and which seek to ensure that the real estate holdings conveyed at no cost will return to the county's ownership if the use deviates from the intended purpose. UF has maintained that inclusion of standard reversionary rights will impair its ability to develop the urban campus, and therefore, staff was able to negotiate a series of use restrictions combined with limited reversionary rights. Let's review. First, the properties will be restricted to public educational use as defined under the agreement. Second, county approval will be required if UF intends to lease the properties to another unaffiliated educational organization. Third, we included a restraint on alienation, providing that UF will not be able to transfer, sell, assign, convey, or in any way dispose of the properties to the benefit of any unaffiliated entity without county approval. If the county were to approve conveyance to another public educational entity, then UF will not be allowed to receive compensation resulting from the land value of the properties. Fourth, if the county were to agree to a transfer to a noneducational entity, the same will be subject to the county's right of first refusal. If the county opts to exercise its rights of first refusal, then the value of the land will be excluded from consideration. If the county decides not to exercise its right, then UF will cause the county to be a third-party beneficiary to the transfer and to receive consideration, equivalent to the market value of the property set at the time. And then fifth, and last, the properties will automatically revert to the county if UF fails to commence construction of Phase 1 within five years of the effective date of disagreement. This hybrid approach of combining use restrictions with limited reversionary rights achieves Board direction and should serve to ensure that the properties are used in a manner consistent with the Board intention in conveying the same. However, as noted before, it lacks the automatic nature and associated benefits that result from having standard reversionary rights. The recommended agreement provides that UF will be required to submit construction reports semiannually during the first five years, immediately following closing on the properties, and annually thereafter, and operational reports annually following the start of operations. The agreement will be effective as of the date of execution by the last party and will continue until the earlier of full construction of the urban campus per the master plan or the date of termination. Prior conveyance, the agreement can be terminated by either party if the conditions precedent are not met. Post-conveyance, the county will have the right to terminate. Post-conveyance, the county will have the right to terminate if construction of Phase 1 and the properties do not commence within the five years of the effective date. Default conditions under the agreement are fairly standard and are subject to a cure period. Any party that fails in the performance of any material obligation will be in default, and upon default, both parties are required to first seek dispute resolution. We thought it will be adequate to provide the board with an update on UF's efforts towards the development of the urban campus. Included as attachment five to the agenda item is the summary provided by University of Florida. As it relates to funding, the 2023 State of Florida budget included an appropriation of $100 million for the West Palm Beach Global Center for Technology and Innovation, contingent upon UF receiving one or more donations of land in Palm Beach County comprising of approximately 12 acres, and obtaining within 60 days of the effective date of the appropriation at least $100 million in commitments to be used in support of the urban campus. UF has indicated that it has achieved the funding goal ahead of the September 1 deadline. As it relates to the real estate holdings, in February 2022, the City of West Palm Beach approved a donation agreement providing UF the right to develop the urban campus on the city's holdings. If today this board approved the DCA, the University of Florida will have secured approximately seven of the 12 acres required under the state appropriation. It is staff understanding that UF continues to negotiate with the owner of the private holdings, which will provide for the balance of the 12 acres required under the state appropriation. It must be noted that if and when the agreement is reached between UF and the private owner, the same will be kept confidential per UF policies. Staff is recommending to the board approval of the Development and Conveyance Agreement, noting that, given the conveyance of county property, the same requires a supermajority vote. We would like to inform the board that Joe Glover, Provost and Senior Vice President of Academic Affairs, Mark Kaplan, Vice President of Government and Community Relations, Colt Little, Senior Counsel, and Karen Sprague, Senior Associate Vice President for Advancement from the University of Florida are present in the audience and have come prepared to provide, if so, the board wishes, a status update regarding the university's efforts towards the development of the urban campus. This concludes staff's presentation. We will address any questions as you deem appropriate.
Thank you, Isme. That's a pretty thorough presentation. We've been through this a few times already. I invite UF's representatives, whoever would like to speak on behalf of the university, to come on up and say a few words.
Good morning. Thank you so much for having us here. It's a real pleasure to talk to you for a few minutes this morning. My name is Joe Glover. I am Provost and Senior Vice President for Academic Affairs at the University of Florida. And on behalf of the university and all of our leaders and staff members involved in this initiative, I'd like to thank you, Mayor Weinroth, and all of the Palm Beach County leaders and staff members for your efforts this past year as we have worked through the details of the conveyance agreement. I also bring greetings of gratitude and special thanks from President Fox. He wanted to extend his personal appreciation to Commissioner Kerner for the early discussions, and most recently, Mayor Weinroth for his leadership. I extend my thanks to all of you commissioners as well. We have appreciated your input and candor as we went through this process. Our exchange has informed our planning and has helped us continue to review and refine our plans. It has been an honor to explore this together with you, and we are grateful for your leadership. Your partnership means a great deal to us. We certainly could not move forward without it, and we very much view this as a long-term relationship. Through the creation of Florida's Global Technology and Innovation Campus in the heart of downtown West Palm Beach, UF will utilize its first-class artificial intelligence resources and build the state's most vibrant technology-focused talent pipeline. This campus of the future will be the centerpiece of a national education model informed by a fluid and dynamic mix of businesses, policymakers, and members of the UF community. We are grateful that you have joined with us on this visionary journey as we identify new ways to fulfill our public mission of education, discovery, engagement, and economic growth. This is just the beginning of what we envision to be a long relationship. I'd like to turn it over now to my colleague, Mark Kaplan, Vice President of Government and Community Relations.
Thank you, Dr. Glover. So it's a pleasure to be back with you all this morning. Echo Dr. Glover's comments of gratitude. As you heard from Ms. Ayala's comments earlier, there has been a tremendous amount of work that has gone into this, and we just wanted to express our thanks to Administrator Baker, to Ms. Ayala, to Mr. Franklin, to Ms. Bagada, and also to Eric McClellan. You know, this has, we view this as a really exciting day for Palm Beach County, for our state. If you look at what's happening in the future of our economy and the future of this state, you really are the center of where that's all going to be, and we think that this global campus is going to provide opportunities for your residents today and for residents to come that we're only just now beginning to manage. Your gift is central to all of that. So as you've heard, there's a tremendous amount of work that's been going on in the background, and if you'd like, Dr. Glover can talk just a little bit more about some of the programmatic things that you can expect to see over the coming months.
Thank you, Mark. So during the period of what we're calling Phase 1, which was May of 2021 to the present, we were focused on completing our feasibility assessment and evaluation, securing state funding, private support, and of course, property in downtown West Palm Beach. So I am thrilled to report, and I think it hit the news this morning, that we have secured $100 million in state funding with the provision that by September 1, we secure approximately 12 acres of donated property and $100 million in private cash gifts. And that $100 million in private cash gifts was what was announced this morning in the press. So we've met that goal. We're thrilled that that's a big step in this project, and we believe that that fact alone goes to show that there is tremendous support for this project. In terms of the property provision, the conveyance agreement with the city is complete. We are in the process of completing the agreement with the private landowner, and we are here today to discuss the action item before you. We will begin Phase 2 in September, and that will last through approximately August of 2024. And specifically, our goals in the next year include the following: hiring our initial strategic leadership for this campus, establishing a physical presence, most likely in temporary space, launching our master planning, and rolling out our speaker series and academic partnership plans. Our goal is to have our academic credit classes commence in the fall of 2024. Our academic programming is coming along very nicely. As you know, the initial academic portfolio is being developed by the deans of UF's Colleges of Business, Engineering, and Law, and is focused on providing top-tier graduate offerings in relevant, high-growth tech fields. This will be a very busy year where our planning will begin to take shape. So let me say in conclusion that we're so grateful for your partnership, and a humble and most sincere thank you to you all, and we're happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Thank you so much for that presentation. I'm not seeing any lights on yet. I just want to say that despite what you've said, it's about giving me credit for this, really, the credit is due to my colleague here, then-Mayor Kerner, who, along with Mayor James, made that trip up to visit with President Fox and brought this idea of you coming down here and creating an urban campus to you, and I am so grateful that you embraced it. I'm grateful that the governor's embraced it and that the legislature's embraced it, and it looks like this is going to happen. I think that this is a game changer for South Florida, especially for West Palm Beach. I think we are looking at this as a great opportunity for our residents to have an educational opportunity that they wouldn't have had otherwise, and we certainly are very excited about what this opportunity means to the future of our county. So thank you very much for, again, embracing the idea that was brought forward to you by then-Mayor Kerner and Mayor James. And again, I want to thank our staff. I know that you've put hundreds of hours into trying to bring this today to us in a form that we find that is acceptable, and I think that we are probably going to be able to approve this today with that supermajority. Not, okay. Commissioner Sacks, you are recognized.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Appreciate it. And I do want to express tremendous admiration to our former mayor, Kerner, in having the foresight to bring our land-grant university here to Palm Beach County. As a state legislator, I know the great esteem that our legislators have towards the University of Florida. As someone who represented other universities in our area, specifically Florida Atlantic University, I think that it is indicative of the respect that University of Florida has with the legislature, that you were awarded $100 million from the state. It is almost unheard of. It is an indication of the respect that the legislature has. It is also an indication of the respect that our alumni have for the University of Florida. You were able to receive another $100 million. So you are flush with cash, and I like that because I like that coming into our county. So as a representative of the county, let me ask you just a couple of questions. The first is, and I want to ask, indicate that Isme has done an amazing job. We have been through this on the phone for maybe a couple of hours to iron out these issues. It's extremely difficult as an attorney to go through these issues with some of the finest attorneys I'm sure that graduated from your law school. One happens to be my stepdaughter, and I think that she's pretty well-educated as a gator. But let me say this. Specifically, how many acres? I see on page 19, we're giving 12 acres. This is to our staff. On page 21, it's 5.03 acres. Exactly how many acres of land is the county giving to the University of Florida?
The county owns approximately five acres, 5.03, rounded, obviously. 12 acres is what the University of Florida was required to obtain under the state appropriation bill. So the county owns five, the city owns approximately two, that gives you seven, and the remaining balance, I believe, will come from the private holder.
Thank you, Mayor, City of West Palm Beach, for adding acreage to give to the University of Florida. One thing I would like to ask you, sir, is that there is a policy at the University of Florida regarding confidentiality. There is a private landowner, and I have been through this numerous times with staff, and I understand that it is a policy of your university to have a confidentiality policy in your discussions with a private landowner. We are in the county government. We don't deal with confidentiality. As far as I know from our legal staff, we like to be transparent. At some point, and I know you have until September 1 to make this happen, so as an attorney, I think we're sort of up against a wall. Can you make that confidentiality policy bend because you're dealing with government? I'd like to know who's the private landowner, how much is he contributing, and what is he going to put on this land that I believe is contiguous to the land that we are awarding to you, sir?
If, with your permission, I'd like to defer to our university attorney because that confidentiality policy is specific to a component of the university, the University of Florida Foundation.
Good morning. Colt Little from University of Florida. Commissioner Sacks, of course, you're correct in that the University of Florida, being a public entity, is typically subject to sunshine law and public records. However, the University of Florida Foundation, as a separate 501(c)(3), has some statutory provisions that apply specifically to it and to donations made to the foundation that provide for confidentiality and exemption from typical public records laws specific to those donor gifts. So we can think about those in two categories. There's normal university business that, just like county business, is subject to sunshine law. There is foundation business that is specific to donors and gifts that is exempt and confidential from those public records laws by statute. With regard to the specifics of this transaction, that agreement between the donor and the foundation will continue to remain confidential, but I think after it's complete, given the public nature of this project, it should be fairly obvious, you know, what the status of that situation is, but the agreement itself will remain confidential.
So you're the attorney?
One of them, yes, ma'am.
Sure, there's a number of. But you're before us today. Are we giving our land to the foundation, or are we giving our land to the University of Florida?
The agreement itself is currently with the foundation, given its separate status as a designated entity that is responsible for receiving gifts on behalf of the university. That's its core purpose. Eventually, that agreement will most likely be transferred and assigned to the University of Florida proper. The corporate entity of the University of Florida is the UF Board of Trustees. It will most likely be assigned to that entity or perhaps a special-purpose entity that is created specifically to hold this property for this urban campus. But regardless, it will be within the UF family. We have a number of affiliate organizations that are all under the ultimate control of the UF Board of Trustees. So it could remain with the foundation, it could be transferred to the Board of Trustees, or perhaps a special-purpose entity specifically for this campus.
Is there any reason why, and maybe there is a compelling reason, but I'd like to know, is there any reason why we don't know who owns the land contiguous to our land that we're giving to, I guess, we're not giving it to University of Florida, we're giving it to a foundation?
Commissioner Sacks, I can weigh in.
Sure, go ahead.
The owner of the land that's right next to it is Mr. Jeff Green, and so that's who...
Is this okay?
Yeah, ownership of that property is a matter of public record.
Yeah, that's a matter of public record. The ownership is Mr. Jeff Green, who's negotiating with the University of Florida. In regards to the amount of acres, that's a matter of public record, which is in Papa, so it could be five acres. So I don't have the exact number, but that is a matter of public record. Now, in regards to the agreement that is reached between Mr. Jeff Green and the University of Florida, that is what is private.
Correct. Thank you, Commissioner.
So good to have an attorney next to me.
That attended UF also.
Oh, my God.
All right. Perfect. I like it.
I'd like to know how many gators we have here, being that I'm from the U.S. University of Miami Law School. So in other words, so now I have, now I understand. So your private negotiations with Mr. Green is private?
Correct.
However, the uses that he will have for that land is public?
It will all, that will be incorporated in the university's master plan for the campus, so all of that property that's going to comprise the urban campus will be part of the master plan that will come before this board again.
And that will be before September 1?
No, ma'am. We have two years from now to complete the master plan, a total, an ultimate deadline of two years.
As you know, my concern is just, is it going to be a parking lot? Is it going to be a, I don't know, some type of private entity that will use the services of the University of Florida? I just, I just find it, I don't like the taste, being in government, that we don't know what uses that land will have, and if anybody knows, I'd be more than happy. I mean, I like this project, I'm going to vote for it, believe me, but I just like the nuances of what's going, what is going to be operating on the land that's owned by Jeff Green. I have tremendous respect for Mr. Green, by the way, and his wife and the family are very education-minded, so I would hope that it is education-minded that is contiguous to our land.
Certainly, yeah. So as you can imagine, as a public entity ourselves, we have a public mission, we have to use our property and facilities for public purposes. You know, there's some ability to incorporate certain private uses that are in support of our mission into our spaces and our properties, but generally speaking, as a state entity, we need to use our resources and our facilities for public use the same way the county does.
And one other question, and I know that the staff and especially Isme has been over this with me before, community engagement, and I know we spoke about this at the beginning. What intentions does the University of Florida have to engage scripts in your research with artificial intelligence, as well as Florida Atlantic University, which has a whole area, a whole school, involved with artificial intelligence, using the engineers that were part of IBM and Boca Raton? And would you just embellish what you're doing here so that I know
Yes.
that this community engagement is going to involve what we have in the city of Boca Raton that our mayor represents, and of course, Florida Atlantic.
Yes, absolutely. We are committed to engaging all of the educational entities in the county, including Palm Beach State College, FAU, Palm State College, FAU, Palm Beach Atlantic College. We are in, I'm actually in direct contact with President Ava Parker of Palm Beach State College, and we have ongoing plans to bring artificial intelligence training for the students at that institution. FAU, we're very aware of their interest in artificial intelligence, and I was in conversation with the provost there. As you know, he recently left to take a presidency, so we're re-establishing that relationship. But the University of Florida has a very large artificial intelligence initiative. We have extended the participation in that initiative to the entire state, all of the state universities, and select state colleges as well, including Palm Beach State College. So that, we see that as part of our mission to bring artificial intelligence and data science to the benefit of the entire state of Florida.
Excellent. Excellent. Thank you so much. That's exactly what I wanted to hear.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sacks. And I would just refer you back to page five of the presentation that ISME made to discuss what was the public educational use that's being defined, and it very clearly identifies the uses, both direct and those that are auxiliary, and those that are incidental, that are allowed on the, on this particular property. So I would refer you to page five and six of the presentation, if you still have some questions on that regard. Commissioner Moreno, you're recognized. Commissioner McKinley, you are recognized.
Thank you, as the lone Knoll on the board. I want to thank you for working so closely with us and with our partners over at the city of West Palm Beach and Mayor James. Thank you for being here today. Just a couple of lighthearted comments. The first one being, of course, this campus, this county extends beyond downtown West Palm Beach into one of the largest agricultural areas, and of course, you're one of our land-grant universities and the home to our IFIS program. And as we know, the agricultural community is incredibly technical-oriented, and so, you know, as you're developing those artificial intelligence programs, please don't leave out the opportunity to engage with our agricultural community.
Ma'am, if I may tell you something, our vice president for IFIS, Dr. Scott Engel, has said publicly on multiple occasions, the future of agriculture in the state of Florida rests with artificial intelligence. So they are very aggressively moving into that area, not only in terms of robotics for planting and harvesting crops, but also in terms of genetics and breeding and diseases and remote sensing. IFIS is one of the colleges that has most aggressively adopted and adapted this technology. So they are all in.
Yeah, they're phenomenal. I had the pleasure of serving on the selection committee for your dean of extension and worked very closely with Dr. Engel. And a little plug on behalf of the Florida Association of Counties, we really appreciate the partnership we have with the university there on your extension programs. And then my last comment, I made a half-hearted, but I stand up to my commitments. I made a bet with Dr. Fox, our president Fox, when he was here. I said, he made a comment about how he had made a contribution to the Florida State University Alumni Fund, I guess, their foundation, sorry, that's the word I was looking for. And so I told him, this was in the height of 2020, when things were moving incredibly slow, that if he was able to get all of this done, I would make a contribution to the University of Florida's foundation. So now I'm stuck having to do that because you are here, so you now have $100 million and $100 contribution to talk about, so.
And we are immensely grateful, and we value every dollar that's going to go into the creation of this magnificent campus.
So if Mark can get me that information after the meeting, I have to, I have to live, live up to my word. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Congratulations.
Commissioner Moreno, you're recognized.
Thank you. Well, as a University of Connecticut graduate and a member of their women's foundation, I'm still contributing to UConn, so, just saying, even though I'm a 35-year resident here. But a quick question. In a perfect world, and that doesn't happen very often, when do you estimate a shovel in the ground?
A shovel in the ground, I would say probably three years, three years from now would be a shovel in the ground. But, but we will, we will start teaching our four-credit academic programs in the fall of 2024, if all goes as planned, before, possibly before a shovel goes in the ground.
Okay. And also, we look forward to your partnership with Jupiter Medical Center and what you're going to do in the north end of the county on that property. And I know that there's a lot of sentiment about the urban campus, but I look forward to referring to it as the Palm Beach County Campus. So that, those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Moreno. We have some public comments. Commissioner, first Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much for being here, and really, what a, what an honor it is to, hopefully, in the very near future, we'll have UF campus here in West Palm Beach. This is just following up a question in one of the, you know, in the, prior to you all coming into this arena, we've been working on a project nearby to develop a county parcel adjacent to the Tri-Rail Station as a TOD. And one of the things the county was doing in support of that was to, if possible, make available some land on this property here to be utilized for parking, for relocating our, the parking needs for that, that station, the Tri-Rail Station there, and for a bus service. And I, my understanding is now, recently, you, having begun to have conversations with those, that entity, can you comment on where you're at with that and if you're going to be able to accommodate that? I just heard now you're expecting about three years before you're putting a shovel in the ground.
Three to four. I'll hedge on Dr. Glover's estimation, to put that on the record. I will say there are ongoing discussions on how to resolve some of those logistical issues that you mentioned. We actually, it's moving very quickly. I haven't even had a chance to get with county staff yet to discuss some of the details of that, but there have been conversations on a way to find a resolution that is acceptable to everyone, that can sort of keep development ticking over and accommodate everyone's needs. That's in the works.
I mean, I'm supportive of your, of this project, but I'm also very supportive of the development of that other site because that's going to, that also is going to, I think, play into providing housing and a really fine transportation center adjacent, right adjacent to this campus. So I think it all, it all works together, and for this to come, all come out of the ground sort of simultaneously is going to be beneficial to everybody. So
Yes, sir.
I really encourage you to, you know, whatever flexibility you can provide, would be personally very, very appreciative and grateful to you.
Absolutely. And I can say that based on reports I've had from discussions this weekend, I'm highly optimistic that that can happen.
Okay. I take you at your word. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And to reiterate the comments that were just made, you know, the TV site is very important to us, and I think that there's a synergy between that development and this development at the UF campus. So anything and everything you can do to facilitate that will certainly be appreciated by this body. Commissioner Sacks, you're recognized.
I'd like to reiterate Vice Mayor Weiss's concern about that, and I know that you give your word, this is something that will continue on in a positive way, a very positive way. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner Sacks. Commissioner Bernard?
Thank you very much. I'd also, would also reiterate Vice Mayor Weiss's comments in regard to making sure that we allow this development, Transit Village, to take place while we're waiting for the UF deal to proceed. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bernard. Commissioner Moreno?
As the county's representative on SFRTA, this is very important. There are 165 parking spaces in question, I believe, and I see that Mr. Mazanoff and his group are here, and I'm sure they're going to address that. But we do, and that was the reason why I asked when you, when there was going to be a shovel in the ground. So I should have continued my train of thought. Somehow, I lost it. But anyway, that is very important to all of us because it's something, it's an agreement that we actually had, the county actually had, with Mr. Mazanoff. So anything that we can do to make this more effective and move more quickly would be greatly appreciated, and I'm sure there's a comment, Harden. Okay, thank you very much.
Very good. And again, we didn't want to muddy this discussion today and this vote by putting some sort of precondition in, but I think you hear the sense of the body, and so we're hoping that this can be resolved.
We have heard you and we hear you today.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that. Commissioner Kerner?
Thank you, Mayor. And so I won't belabor the points because I think you guys know how I feel about, about the project, but regarding the Transit Village, I just want to reiterate my perspective and the same perspective of the board. It's very important to us. Aren't you the chair, chair of Tri-Rail now? Or were you the chair?
I have passed the gavel.
Well, thank you for your service. And so obviously, our constituents rely on Tri-Rail. It's a big, important component to our transit system.
And PalmTran.
And PalmTran, for sure. And then let me just give a shout out to Andy Chesnick. I hope he's watching because he's been working very diligently on this issue and the Transit Village issue at large. It's been a pleasure to have their entrance into the sphere. So we'll move into public comment, Mr. Mayor. All right, well, we're delighted to have City of West Palm Beach Mayor Keith James with us today, one of the visionaries in this process. Thank you for joining us today and for your leadership.
And as a courtesy, we are going to waive the limit on your speaking, but we want to be out of here before noon.
You said that because I'm a lawyer or because I'm a mayor? I don't know. I will certainly honor that request. Mayor, thank you, Mayor Robert Reinroth. Thank you also to Commissioner David Kerner. I remember I trip up to Gainesville a little bit over a year ago, and I, once again, want to publicly acknowledge you were being instrumental in bringing this initiative to the city and the county. I owe you, and indeed, I think we all owe you a debt of gratitude. Thank you also to Vice Mayor Greg Weiss, Commissioner McBurnard, who both represent the great city of West Palm Beach. Thank you for all that you do each and every day on behalf of the 117,000 residents that call our city home. Thank you too also to Commissioner Maria Moreno, Commissioner Maria Sacks, Commissioner Melissa McKinley, for having me here today and for scheduling this item for consideration. It has been a long time coming. In the spirit of a great partnership and continued cooperation and collaboration, it is indeed a privilege and honor to stand before you today. I hearken back to 2019, a few months after I was elected as mayor, I took the time to humbly come before you and to basically state that there would be a new era of cooperation and collaboration between the city and the county. And I believe that this is, this discussion today, the decision you're about to make today, is indicative of that spirit of collaboration and cooperation. So I, I'm before you today to encourage you to support the urban campus in West Palm Beach through the donation of land by the county to the University of Florida Foundation. Now, you've already heard, the merits of this initiative are as profound as the adjectives used to describe it. Transformative, game-changing, a win-win, just to name a few. The Urban Campus Initiative will bring unique, focused graduate and business programs to Palm Beach County and the city of West Palm Beach. These programs will advance workforce development in our communities while responding to our region's emerging needs, our business community. The new corporate relocations in our communities and the future relocations will someday find an even larger talent pool of the best and brightest from which to recruit. Having a top-tier public university in the city and county would help all of the regions' institutions of higher education to thrive. Bringing this initiative to our community paves the way for its future recognition as an education hub, a place that provides high-quality education, attracts investment, retains local students, and adds to our already very special reputation. The Urban Campus Initiative has the potential to reverse the cycle of children and employees holding degrees in science, engineering, and business, leaving our neighborhoods, our cities, and our state for jobs elsewhere. This is not only about education or business, but it's also about our families. Palm Beach County's investment in this initiative through the donation of land will help the city and county continue to attract high-paying jobs, intellectual capital, and financial capital. It will enrich our social and cultural fabric. It will help West Palm Beach and Palm Beach County realize the quality of life for which we all have been working. This initiative is no longer just a dream, but rather, it is a dream within our collective reach, a dream your vote today can help make possible. This is an exciting moment and a tremendous opportunity for our communities and all whom we serve. Mayor, commissioners, I encourage you to approve the donation of land, and I thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. And finally, go Gators. Almost finally, because I have heard about all these universities and Florida State and University of Florida and even the University of Connecticut. I've not said one word about Harvard.
Thank you, Mayor James. And, you know, as the saying goes, a rising tide lifts all boats, and I think that this is certainly going to be a benefit not only to UF but to FAU and the other universities in our community. And this is also going to help our public education. I know that you've been working with our superintendent in schools, and we are looking for a great synergy between UF and our public school system. Commissioner Kerner?
Thank you, Mayor. And just a point of personal privilege to recognize Warren Corpus from the UF Gator Club here in Palm Beach County. He's our local Gator leader and has helped cultivate the passion for this project, both within the alumni base and outside and to the general community, and we very much appreciate your leadership, sir. And I don't think you had any comments, but you're here today in support, and we appreciate that. Thank you. And we have Michael Mazanoff on behalf of Transit Village.
Mr. Mazanoff, come on up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, commissioners. And of course, I echo Mayor James's comments relating to the urban campus for University of Florida, and maybe it'll be called, you know, Palm Beach's University of Florida. We'll see where that goes. We are very, very supportive of University of Florida coming to West Palm Beach. We've been working with West Palm Beach and Palm Beach County for, forever, forever, for as long as everybody has been on the dais, and then some. And we're looking forward to closing with the county in the next few months and immediately then starting our construction. And then, once we start construction on the Transit Village site, the first thing that will happen is that we're going to lose 161 spaces, plus 25 spaces for PalmTran drivers as part of that construction. We had always anticipated that they would go on the North County block, which is now subject to your consideration. The good news is, is that over this past weekend, as late as last night, we've been in conversations with the University of Florida at the highest levels, and we think that we will have everything worked out, but there, and we're pretty confident that that will happen. So we want to thank the University of Florida. It was, I spoke to Mark a little bit earlier, Mark Haplin, a little bit earlier today, and we'll have to work out the terms. And there's really two periods of time that we're concerned about. And I did speak to the past executive director of the SFRTA, Steve Abrams, last night, and I spoke also to Dave Deitch, the new executive director, and they said that they wanted their, this temporary space to be on the North County block. There's over 250,000 boardings and over 250,000 alightings just for Tri-Rail alone happening at the station. It's one of the key stations in our transportation network, and we need to protect it, make sure that it continues to work while we do that. And there's two periods of time that we need to address. One is the period of time, basically now, because we have to start our permitting process for the parking lot on the North County block, to start once we close with the county. And that period of time between our closing and the period of time between the University of Florida's closing is when the county's property is fairly vacant, and we need to be able to... be able to use that for that. Now, we hope that the University of Florida will be more encouraging than maybe three to four years starting construction. Maybe it'll be faster, maybe they won't, you know? And we want to be flexible that once, so we need a license agreement per our agreements to take place commencing now through to the University of Florida's closing, and then we will work out another licensing agreement or a continuing licensing agreement with the University of Florida once they close.
Thank you, Mr. Mazinoff. I think we understand, and I think you've heard from this body, that we are impressing upon UF the need to ensure that those parking spaces are made available so that our residents who use Tri-Rail and our drivers at PalmTran will have a place to park.
And I hope that we'll be able to do that. And we welcome the University of Florida, and we'd like to resolve these issues as rapidly as we possibly can.
Thank you so much.
So, thank you for your support.
Thank you, Ms. Mazinoff. And Mayor James, just a comment with respect to this parking that will probably be across the street from the station. I think there may be some safety concerns with people running across the street to get to the train. We may want to view that as an area where we want to have some sort of a temporary lighting so that people are not run over as they're trying to get to the train. We're supposed to have, we have, what's our vision zero? We want to have vision zero, especially on that street. Okay. I believe, Commissioner McKinley?
Well, I was just going to say, we've got students that do that every day that take Tri-Rail up to attend Dreyfus', so it should be an overall conversation in that corridor, not just for this purpose.
All right. Well, you've heard the challenge, Mayor James. Commissioner Kerner?
Thank you, Mayor. And not to belabor the point on the parking issue, but the Board has recognized how important it is, and Mr. Mazinoff, should this motion, an item pass today, that doesn't conclude the Board's involvement in this process, and this is an important issue to us personally. And in fact, we're required by the Developer Conveyance Agreement to continue to be involved in this process and continue to devote to authorize certain development and other aspects of the project. So, you have my personal commitment that should this pass today, I will remain as engaged as I have been with related, with your group, with the university, to ensure and to amplify the need for that parking and for that license agreement to be executed at some point in the near future. And having said that, I'll just close on my comments and make a motion, and I'll keep it very brief. First of all, thank you, Verdinia. I remember a little bit over a year ago when I tapped her on the shoulder and I said, "I have an idea. I need to take Government Hill from you. Will you support it?" And I remember the look in her eyes particularly, and to where we are today, it's been a long process, and SMA's been an amazing champion of our direction and will. And so, I'm very thankful for your participation and for yours as well. And Mayor James talked a lot about dreams, and those comments that you just made, this is a dream come true for me personally, to see this collaboration and to see this vision come together. And if it wasn't enough, if it wasn't something that I was going to support, which obviously I am, just to make Commissioner McKinley have to donate $100 to the University of Florida would be reason enough to support this item and make her an official Florida Gator. And the Gator Nation is everywhere. We love to say that. There's a lot of passion in the University of Florida's public sphere, but it's great to now know that hopefully, it'll be in West Palm Beach and Palm Beach County as well. And so, with that, I'd like to make a motion on 6F2, a Development and Conveyance Agreement with the University of Florida Foundation.
I have a motion by Commissioner Kerner, seconded by Commissioner Bernard, who hails from UF.
NFS.
NFSU. Okay. We don't want to, you know, I'm, go Huskies. I'm from Northeastern. All right. So, just to clarify for the record, we are on 6F2. This is staff recommendation of approval of a DCA with UF for the planning, development, design permitting, construction, operation, and maintenance of an urban educational campus, which will include approximately 5.03 acres of county-owned property located in the city of Palm, West Palm Beach. We have a motion by Commissioner Kerner, seconded by Commissioner Bernard. I have one last remark from our county administrator.
Next time, I'm going to wear shades so you don't see the eyes. But I really wanted to thank SMA, Purvey, and Howard. A lot of man-hours, hundreds of man-hours went into this. And I'd also like to thank the attorney and the negotiator that worked with us because we went back and forth, and it was always professional. We knew what our charge was, and we looked, both parties looked for a win-win situation, and I think that's what we brought you today. And yes, I am a Knoll.
And we'll recognize the women-hours, too. That being said, all in favor, all opposed, show that is unanimously approved by this Board, seven to zero. Thank you. We look forward to working with you on an ongoing basis. All right. Let's take a five-minute break, just to give everybody a chance to stretch their legs. Let's get back together at 20 minutes to 12. Let's do a photo op. Let's get some of our UF friends up here. Let's get Mayor James up here, and let's get a picture. All right, we have a quorum, and we are back in business. So, we are going to take up our agenda, and if you have lost track of our reordered agenda, we're back at 6D1. This is planning, zoning, and building, and staff is recommending a motion to approve on preliminary reading and advertised for public hearing on Tuesday, September 13, 2022, at 9:30 in ordinance of the Board of County Commissioners adopting an inter-local service-boundary agreement with the city of Green Acres. Do I have a motion to approve? I have a motion by Commissioner Sacks. Do I have a second? I have a second by the Vice Mayor. Commissioner Kerner, you have a remark to make?
Very briefly, did any representative of Green Acres want to speak? I know we had the Chief, Chief Mackey here, and Andrea, the city manager. Everything's good.
You don't want to take victory from the, or what is it, defeat from the jaws of victory? You're recognized for three minutes.
Thank you very much, Mayor Commissioners. Andrea McQ, city manager for the city of Green Acres, just want to thank County Administrator Baker, all the staff that we have worked with for the last couple of years on this endeavor, and we are very grateful to be able to be here today, and we are hopeful for approval on this item. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And just to stress that this proposal does not annex any property, but rather, it's going to provide a more flexible mechanism for the annexation to occur within the proposed area. So, with that being said, all in favor, all opposed, that's unanimously approved, seven to zero. Thank you very much, everybody. We're going to move on now to Item 6D2, again, planning and zoning and building. Staff is seeking direction to move forward with a building recertification program that adopts the state's standards for the particular building types within the unincorporated Palm Beach County. And let's see, do we need a presentation? I'm not seeing anybody clamor for a presentation.
Just a quick question.
Okay. Commissioner Kerner, you have a question?
I don't, I don't need a presentation. I've been fully briefed, but I wanted to extend a special thank you to Ramsey as the Executive Director of PZMB. I know that the workload is high. You've been, you and your department staff through the administrator have been so attentive to the needs of the Board, and I want you to know that. I deeply appreciate what you provide in terms of leadership to PZMB and to this county. Having said that, I can make the motion.
Your motion's recognized.
What's that?
Do we have a public comment?
Oh, you're correct. I apologize. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Richard Radcliffe.
You know better than talking before you get to the microphone, Mr. Radcliffe. Yes. Richard Radcliffe, Executive Director, Palm Beach County, League of Cities. Thank you all for this opportunity. It said "if needed," and it doesn't look like it's "if needed." But now that I'm here, I would like to thank you. This has been a wonderful working partnership. I appreciate everything the county's done. There's 67 counties, 16 regional leagues. Nobody's even closely doing the things that we're doing like this, and I wanted to thank you and your department heads and everybody that was involved in this. We've helped lead the way for the entire state. Some of the things that we're doing here are going to be because of the work that we've all done together. So, I wanted to recognize you, Ramsey, Patrick, the whole team, everyone, Doug, everybody. I can't leave them all out. But this is ongoing, but we appreciate you working with us, and we like being leaders in the state. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Radcliffe. And of course, we appreciate the relationship between the municipalities and the county, and we appreciate you moving this forward so quickly. Just as a matter of comment, this is going to affect 550 buildings in the unincorporated areas. We have additional comments, Commissioner?
None.
No?
Are there more on 62? Actually, there is. I apologize. Marco?
Marco Millabar.
Yes, sir.
You are recognized for three minutes.
Well, perhaps my speech is for not because it sounds like you have.
I'm just going to ask you to identify yourself for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Marco Millabar. I'm the Treasurer of Golden Lakes Village A. We're a 55-plus condominium located in unincorporated Palm Beach County. We're comprised of 1,088 units spaced on over 100 acres. So, we have good knowledge of building disciplines and things. And so, I just wanted to address this today, but my comments were just to move forward in a thoughtful manner that was fair because, in our case, we have 260 roofs. So far, since 2007, we've replaced 244 of them because we have in place an inspection program and a method with the cooperation of Mr. Weis and staff. We do that. So, we also have some two-story buildings, so we don't have very many balconies, but we do have a concrete restoration program in place, and that's a complicated process. So, some of these things that are going to be in this ordinance are, many of the good condominiums that are operated right are taken care of. So, I just wanted to point that out to you, and we thank you for your time and courtesy in allowing me to speak.
Thank you. And Commissioner, I mean, Vice Mayor Weiss would like to commend or comment.
Commend as well. That was absolutely the right word. Marco, thank you so much for being here and the efforts that you all are making at Golden Lakes to ensure that your buildings are inspected and being properly maintained. You know, the program you had is a model for buildings throughout Florida, but to have it here in Palm Beach County and you as part of our community, really appreciate the efforts you all have made to ensure that you continue to keep your buildings safe for your residents. And I just was really appreciative when you reached out to my office and let me know your interest in this item, and appreciate you being here today and spending some time with us and informing our Board of, you know, the efforts being made by. And I know it's not true of just Golden Lakes. I know there are a number of communities that have been proactive over the years to continue to maintain their buildings. So, thank you very much, and thank you for keeping the community safe.
Thank you, Commissioner. And by the way, we are a polling place today at our community center.
Very good. Commissioner Sacks, you're recognized.
Yeah, I just want to concur with all the comments on the great work of staff. This has not been easy, and it has been a real, it's been a real challenge. And I know that the people in Tallahassee look at us, Palm Beach County, as a, as really a shining star of how to do this since Surfside. So, thank you very much. I'm glad that we're here, and I'm ready for a yes vote.
Thank you, Commissioner Sacks. Commissioner McKinley?
Yes, thank you. Two comments, Mayor. The first one is, I really want to recognize State Senator Jason Pizzo out of the Miami area. This happened in his district, the Surfside tragedy did. And I get the feeling that he is going to take the lead on this issue for the next four years. So, I would encourage staff and our Legislative Affairs Team in particular to work closely with him as we roll these changes out and when there's the moment to fix glitches and make corrections, that we have a good relationship with his office. The second thing, Mayor, if you would allow me, we have some new faces sitting at the table. We've got a lot of transition going on. A lot of county employees have retired, and new faces have come in. So, Mayor, if you wouldn't mind, we know Ramsey, and we know Patrick, but if the rest of the team could briefly introduce themselves, so we know exactly who you are.
Okay. Push your buttons and introduce yourselves, please.
I'm Ryan Lauder, Assistant County Attorney.
I'm John Blake, the Deputy Building Official for the Building Division.
Michael Gogger, the Building Division Coordinator.
Well, welcome to the family.
Well, thank you very much.
I think he's been here three weeks.
Are you any relation to?
He's my father, yes.
Wow, what a, well, you know, welcome. And please pass our regards on. He was today, you know, with the proclamations that we gave earlier for Overdose Awareness Day and some of the other things we're doing, what a tremendous leader he was in the fight. And I know he's still, he's still volunteering. He hasn't really gone anywhere. He's just not getting paid for it anymore, but give him our best, please.
He doesn't mind that whatsoever. I know he loves putting the time in, so.
Thank you.
Thank you all for what you do, too.
Thank you so much. Okay. So, I have, Commissioner Kerner has made a motion to approve. I have Vice Mayor Weiss is going to give me a second. All in favor, all opposed, show that 6D2 is approved, seven to zero. We're moving now on to 6E1. Clerk and Controller is asking for a budget transfer of $160,000 from general fund contingency reserves to supplement the 2022 VAB budget. I guess Commissioner Kerner must have used up their money.
Yes.
Having said that, do I have a motion, Commissioner Kerner?
So moved.
I have a, Commissioner Kerner, Commissioner McKinley is giving a second. All in favor, all opposed, show that is approved, seven to zero. All right. 6F1 has been removed from our agenda, so we're moving on now to 6F2, which we've already done, which takes us now to 6F, wait a minute.
6G1.
I've got to turn the page. We are now on 6G1, Administration. The staff is recommending a motion to approve on preliminary reading and permission advertised for a public hearing on September 13, 2022, at 9:30 in ordinance, the Boca, Boca, Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County of mending the Palm Beach Code, providing for authority to provide for required written fair notice of termination of residential tenancies. This is something that I brought forward to ask Mr. Bonlaren to work on, and I'm pleased to see this brought back forward, brought forward today. This would require a 60-day written notification for either non-renewal of a residential lease, termination of a residential lease, or an increase of rental rate by more than 5% for tenancies of a specific duration under Section 83.575, Prence 1 of the Florida statutes, or for tenancies without a specific term under 83.575, Prence 1 through Prence 3 of the Florida statutes. Mr. Bonlaren, do you want to give us any additional information on this?
Thank you for that very detailed explanation, Mayor, and I think you hit your high points of this particular ordinance that you've asked us to bring back. I do want to recognize Masimba Matumbo from the County Attorney's Office, who's with us and has worked diligently. Just so you know, there've been a number of municipalities and counties that have adopted similar ordinances. I've worked with Masimba in doing a number of research of those particular ordinances, and we've taken components of some of those from Miami-Dade, and thank you to the Miami-Dade team and their staff for enlightening us on some of their research, as well as some of our other municipalities throughout the county. One of the things that I wanted to also point out in this particular ordinance is, what we've done in here is we put a little bit of teeth into it. Some of the other ordinances, we've seen there's really no enforcement mechanisms in that. And with the help of Administrator Rutter and his team at Code Enforcement, we've included a provision that would allow code to be able to enforce that, and then also extended that option to the municipalities within their own jurisdictions that they could enforce it with their respective departments and agencies and officials. We were very fortunate at our meeting at the League of Cities, and the Board of the League moved this forward without any objection. And one of the things that I think that they appreciated the most is that we recognized existing ordinances under this. So, if you were a city that already had an ordinance, that was covered by this. If you were a city that was going to pass your own version of this, that was recognized under this as well. And if you just wanted to fall into what we've put in there, then municipalities had to do nothing, and that would, they would be covered under this particular ordinance. So, that is the meat and potatoes of what is before you today, and we'd appreciate your support, and we'll certainly answer any questions that you might have.
Very good. And I'll quote from the description that this ordinance is anticipated to have a beneficial impact for residents. It's going to help renters navigate It's going to help renters navigate the highly competitive rental market by providing more time to adjust to higher rents or seeking alternative housing, and will help landlords in sooner identifying certain residential units that may become available in order to identify new occupants. That being said, I'm looking for a motion. Commissioner McKinley, you make a motion to approve?
Yes, sir.
I have a motion by Commissioner McKinley. I have a second by Commissioner Sacks. Seeing no further discussion, all in favor, all opposed. That is approved, seven to zero. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on now to Item 6H1. This is Housing and Economic Development.
I'll go ahead and move Item 6H1A and B, noting that neither the taxing power nor the faith and credit of the county nor any county funds shall be pledged to pay the principal premium, if any, or interest on these bonds.
And that's a motion by the Vice Mayor. Do I have a second? I have a second by Commissioner Bernard. Seeing no further discussion, all in favor, all opposed. Show that is being approved, seven to zero. Thank you, staff. Thank you, everybody. All right, we're moving right along. We're now on 6I1. This is from the Office of Financial Management and Budget. Staff is recommending a motion to approve a budget transfer of $2.1 million-- two, I'll do the whole thing-- $2,144,495 from general fund contingency reserves to the supervisor of elections to assist her with the reimbursed-- well, obviously, it's a request by the supervisor of elections to keep the place running.
So moved.
We have something going on today. Oh, it's election.
So moved, Mayor.
I have a motion by Commissioner Kerner. I have a second by Vice Mayor. Seeing no further discussions, all in favor, all opposed. The SOE gets our money, seven to zero. All right, we've got one more item on our regular agenda, and that's from the Health Department. And my good friend, Alina Alonso, is back with us. Missed you. Not really.
So moved.
Okay. Staff is recommending a motion to adopt a resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County adopting the fiscal 2223 budget for air pollution control program. The proposed budget for the air pollution control program from this funding source is $994,345, which is 3.41% increase from the current year budget. Can I have a motion?
Yes, sir.
A motion by Commissioner McKinley, seconded by the Vice Mayor. Any further discussion, seeing none, all in favor, all opposed. Show-- yes?
Dr. Alonso, you're retiring soon. We're so very happy to see you in our chambers. Do you want to say a couple words?
Let's vote on it first.
But as long as you don't use the word positivity.
I won't use anything you don't like today. Thank you very much for approving our increase, much needed. And I won't be seeing you officially, but I'm still sticking around. I expect to see all of you frequently. It's been an absolute pleasure, and I just couldn't have a better ride for the past 33 years. That's half of my life. I can't even say it without getting a little choked up, but it's been a great ride. There's no other career that I could have chosen as a physician than working for my community and helping my community to protect, improve, and do everything that we do in public health. So, thank you, and you have been a great crowd. We live in a great county, and no of the other counties have the relationships that we have between the Health Department and the county. So, thank you so much for everything you've done.
And we certainly thank you for leading us through a very trying period. Obviously, you and our former mayor, Kerner, had a lot on your shoulders for two years, and we are happy that we made it through the way we did. Now, you know, Dr. Fauci is also retiring. Is there any, you know, something we should read into this?
We're taking off to the Caribbean.
Vice Mayor, you're recognized.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Alonso, don't go away. I just wanted to have an opportunity to say thank you. What a gift you have been to our community for so many years, but also during some of our most difficult and challenging times, the pandemic notwithstanding, but also with the situation with the, was it Ryson that was put in the mail? And I mean, everything--
Anthrax.
Anthrax, okay.
I remember it well.
And, but, you know, you've had your challenges in leading us through a number of public health initiatives and issues, and just can't thank you enough as both your neighbor and I hope as your friend, to thank you and thank you for your service to our community. You will be greatly missed.
My pleasure.
Thank you. Commissioner McKinley.
Wow, we've gone through some issues together, and thank you for everything you've done, whether it was discussing cancer in the central western part of Palm Beach County to algae blooms, to helping us respond to the overdose crisis in our county, to some of the housing conditions, and your team has been on board through all of that. But on a personal note, from taking that phone call from a scared mom when her daughter woke up with COVID and couldn't feel her legs, and giving me the advice I needed on where to send her for care. You've been a friend and a colleague, and I wish you very well in your retirement, and I'll be joining you in 85 days. So, thank you for your service to the state of Florida and to Palm Beach County.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bernard.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Dr. Alonso, just want to say thank you for your dedication to the residents of Palm Beach County. You're going to be truly missed, so thank you for everything that you've done. Thank you.
I'm not leaving town. I'll still be here, working for them. One way, I won't be working, but I'll still be helping my community.
Somehow, volunteer always is a little bit more than, you know, just work. Commissioner Sacks, you have the last word.
I'll never have the last word when it comes to Dr. Alonso. I tell you, I started on the commission, and thanks to the leadership of Mayor Kerner-- thank you. Oh, wow. And-- it softens my words. And to the great leadership and passion of Verdinia Baker and you, I really felt very calm. I thought that this was what we do all the time. We do these pandemics, you know, one after the other. But I guess it means now that you're retiring that we will not have any more pandemics. It's going to be smooth sailing.
In years.
But if those numbers go up, we know where to find you. All right? Thank you. God bless you. Safe travels, and this is your home. You can travel on wherever you want, but this is your home, it's Palm Beach. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sacks. Commissioner Kerner said she's not getting the last word.
You are a credit to the state and a credit to the medical profession and our community, and we all love you, so thank you for your service.
You couldn't have said anything more beautiful. Thank you.
Administrator Baker, you can trump us all.
Ditto to everything that has been said, but thank you, my sister, as we went through a number of things, including hurricanes thrown in there. So, you've always been there for us, your staff. Want to thank them as well, and we look forward-- no, we don't, we want to continue working with you, but not in pandemics and all the other stuff. But thank you for your dedication, even on the weekends, holidays. You've been right there with us, so we work staff to staff. And I'm going to be quiet now because I don't want to cry.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion to approve the item, which is 6J1. I have a motion by Commissioner Marino. Do I have a second? I have a sec--
It was already pending.
Did we pass it already?
It's pending.
Do we have motions on the table? Clerk, would you please tell me who made the motion the second?
Commissioner McKinley made the motion, and Vice Mayor Weiss was the second.
Okay. Thank you for refreshing my recollection. All in favor, all opposed. Show that is approved, seven to zero. That's the end of our regular agenda, and it's only noon. We could keep on go-- is it one? No, it's one or something. All right, let's do some board appointments. We have before us Item 7A1, which is a recommendation to approve the appointment of two members to the Investment Policy Committee. We have three very fine nominees here, and so I'm going to look for a motion to nominate.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to formally nominate Mr. Johnny Ortiz, and in doing so, I hope that you all have had a chance to meet with Mr. Ortiz over the last few months. He is not just a Hispanic male, and I think that it's important that we continue to try to amplify the diversity of our boards and commissions, but he's also a highly educated man, a small business owner, a career law enforcement officer, and a leader in law enforcement. And I think he would bring a perspective that is currently lacking by the Investment Policy Committee, which is such an important committee, and I thank Vice Mayor Weiss for his service on this committee. But I think of-- all the committees deserve a level of diversity that reflects our community, but I think it's exceptionally important in the investment policy sphere because of how those investments affect our constituents in this county. And certainly, I believe the Clerk and Comptroller is formally in charge of this process, or that's the entity that does the investments, if I understand correctly. And so, I know, we all know Clerk and Comptroller Bruzo very well and his financial management skills, but I know that he relies in particular on the Investment Policy Committee greatly when they go to make their decisions about where to invest and how to invest. So, I hope we can support Mr. Ortiz and I nominate him.
Thank you, Commissioner Kerner. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. And I would like to nominate Robert Britt DeViney. And Mr. DeViney is a resident of District 2, somebody known for many years, but he's involved in financial planning and investments for folks and helping them get, put together investment programs for themselves to help plan for the future and their retirements. And I think having somebody with his knowledge would be beneficial as a member of the Investment Policy Committee, and so I ask for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, and I'm going to just move the gavel over to you for a second and ask to be recognized.
The Vice Mayor recognizes the Mayor.
Thank you very much. Robert Rubin is a personal friend of mine. He's from Boca Raton. He is a CPA. He's very well-versed in financial affairs, and I think we're very lucky today to have three excellent candidates before us, and I hope that you will give Mr. Rubin your consideration. And with that, I'm going to ask each one of us-- I'm going to take the gavel back, and I'm going to ask that we have each one of us from left to right give their votes so that they can be tabulated. So, Commissioner Sacks, would you please give your one or two votes?
Can I do two votes?
You can do one or two.
Okay. I like these odds. Then, I vote number one for Mr. Ortiz and number two for Mr. DeViney.
Very good. Commissioner Bernard, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I vote for Mr. Robert DeViney and also Mr. Johnny Ortiz.
Very good. Commissioner Kerner.
Thank you, Mayor. I vote for Mr. DeViney and Mr. Ortiz.
Okay. I'm going to go back to my far right. Commissioner McKinley.
DeViney, Ortiz.
Very good. Commissioner Marino.
Thank you. I'm going to go with DeViney and Rubin.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
I will be voting for DeViney and Ortiz.
Very good. And I am going to be voting for Ortiz and Rubin. So, I believe we have six votes for DeViney and six votes for Ortiz. It appears those are our two appointments into the Investment Policy Committee. Do we need to have a-- I think that's enough as far as that. We've got our vote. Clerk's good? Clerk's good. All right. Time for commission district appointments. I'm going to start from my right. Commissioner McKinley.
Yes, I'd like to reappoint Regina Boland to the Water Utilities Advisory Board.
I have a motion by Commissioner McKinley, seconded by the Vice Mayor. All in favor, all opposed. That's been approved, seven to zero. That's it? Okay, Commissioner Marino.
None at this time.
Thank you. Commissioner Sacks.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a motion to reappoint Samantha Schlossberg-Fürer to the Commission on Women. She is a circuit judge.
Second.
Judge Schlossberg-Fürer, do I have a second? I have a second by the Vice Mayor. All in favor, all opposed. It's approved unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Bernard.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to appoint Keith Golden to the Emergency Medical Service Advisory Council.
I have a second by Commissioner Kerner. All in favor, all opposed, seven to zero. That's it, Commissioner? Commissioner Kerner.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to appoint James Bronstein to the Tourist Development Council and Myrna Rosoff to the Water Utility Board. Those are both reappointments.
Both reappointments. I have a second by the Vice Mayor. All in favor, all opposed. Show that is approved, seven to zero. Vice Mayor?
I would like to reappoint Carlos Sedano to the Water Utilities Advisory Board and to appoint Richard Dickle to the Fire Rescue Advisory Board.
Okay. Do I have a second? I have a second by Commissioner Kerner. All in favor, all opposed. Show that is six to zero approved, with Commissioner Bernard off the dais, and the Chair has no appointments. So, we're going to move on to administrators' comments. Administrator, I understand that you have an announcement to make with respect to our purchasing director.
Why don't you--
Do you-- why don't we just receive and file? Do I have-- So moved. I have a motion to receive and file by Commissioner Kerner, seconded by the Vice Mayor. All in favor, all opposed. That's a six to zero to receive and file the administrator's report. Now, let's talk about our purchasing director.
I did send something out late yesterday. We went through a recruitment process, and I'd like the Board to ratify Ms. Melody Thelwell as our new purchasing director. She possesses over 20 years of governmental and private purchasing experience. She served as the Chief Procurement Officer for the School Board for Miami-Dade County for a number of years, and most recently operated as the Director of Procurement for Florida Atlantic University. We got to get our I's in there. And she led the development and execution of the university-wide procurement of goods and services, including facility-type projects for the university. So, she holds a Master's in Public Administration, as well as a Master's of Science in International Real Estate Finance, and additionally, she was recently accepted into Florida International University's doctoral program for Business Administration. So, I'd like to have her come to the podium and say hello to the Board, answering questions they may have.
Good afternoon, and thank you for having me. Thank you, County Administrator Baker. Thank you, Deputy Administrator Durin, for having me, as well as the county administrators, as well as the Mayor. Thank you so much.
We're looking forward to have you join us, but let's get a motion to ratify. I have a motion by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner Sacks. All in favor, all opposed. Welcome to the family. Six to zero, unanimous vote.
Thank you so much for your time, and I look forward to working with each and every one of you.
Thank you. Okay, Administrator Baker, anything else you'd like to bring up? No. Good. All right, County Attorney. Commissioner McKinley.
Yes, I have a question for the Administrator. You know, we've ratified a couple of positions here, and it's been a pleasure to do so. You're assembling quite a wonderful team. I do have the question, though. It's been over a year since your deputy county administrator position was filled, and given that we're at the peak of hurricane season, it gives me a little bit of concern to not know, God forbid, anything should happen to you, who your deputy is. So, do we have a timeline for when that decision's going to be made?
I don't have a specific timeline right now. What I have been doing is ensuring that all of my assistants have the opportunity to be in control when I'm out of the office. They've had opportunities to handle the budget, be involved in the budget process, so that they will be all equal depending whenever I'm gone, for whatever reason. This Board will have options to do so. It is my goal to definitely have it fill long before I decide that I'm going to retire, so they'll have-- that person will have it. But I'm allowing each of them to-- each of them to rotate through. In addition to that, it now has given me an opportunity to also know more of what's going on in the departments directly as opposed to having that person in the middle. So, I've learned a lot through this process as well.
I think amplifying on that, and you and I have had this conversation before, I think bench strength is very important for our county and, you know, we're not forcing you to fill that position, but on the other hand, I think it's important that position gets someone in there. Okay. All right. Commissioner Marino, Commissioner comments?
Thank you. I have a request for an off-site proclamation declaring September as 211 Suicide Awareness and Prevention Month.
I have a second by the Vice Mayor. All in favor, all opposed, six to zero. Next.
Yep. Canvassing Board. I'd like to throw my hat into the ring now that Vice Mayor, now that the primary day is over, Vice Mayor's no longer eligible. I would like to make that however it does.
Okay. And we need to make a motion, but it needs to be post-certification of this primary election because obviously the Vice Mayor needs to be in service until those results are tabulated. Commissioner Kerner, would you like to make a motion?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. And in making this motion to appoint Commissioner Marino to the Palm Beach County Canvassing Board effective at the time of certification of the primary election, I'll also extend an invitation to join us tonight if you have any time off, to come view the operations at a critical moment on Election Day. Certainly, your service will extend through as you will see a lot of time throughout the general election, but if you have any interest in seeing Wendy in action and the Board in action, we would love to have you tonight at any point in time and I'll be going there directly from here.
That'd be great. Thank you very much.
All right. So, I have a motion. I'm looking for a second. I have a second by the Vice Mayor. Our Attorney would like to now say something.
I'm just a little concerned that she's unaware of the responsibilities and perhaps observing would be wise.
Commissioner Marino has both eyes open.
I am aware. Okay.
That being said, all in favor, all opposed, show that Commissioner Marino will take her place on the Canvassing Board post-certification of the primary.
Thank you. I have two more comments.
Oh, and just to make a point for the record, that says an alternate Commissioner Kerner being our appointed member on the Canvassing Board. Okay.
Two more additional comments. Vice Mayor Weiss and I had the opportunity to be at the key ceremony for Staff Sergeant Montane this weekend. The House was donated by Homes for Our Troops. So, he is now in a mortgage-free adaptive home in Jupiter Farms. I know that you all did another ceremony about two weeks ago. It's a wonderful program. They've done over 300 homes post-9/11 for adaptive homes for veterans, mortgage-free. And luckily, we have many of those in Palm Beach County. So, it's a wonderful program and I also want to say if anybody wants to join me going over the edge for Habitat for Humanity, I paid my, I made my $1,000 contribution and I will be going the, over the edge of the Phillips Building. So, anybody want to join me, just do so. I'm looking forward to it. First 100 people. There'll be 100 of us.
Thank you, Commissioner Marino. Okay. I'm going to go to my left and Commissioner
You like to stir it up there. Okay.
Yeah, I just want to keep you awake over there.
Well, I'm, thank you. First, I'd like to say, I have two comments. One is that during this little period of vacation for the county, I found that our executive administrators, Patrick and Todd, to be 150% available and present. We had issues all the time and I always connect with Verdinia Baker. She's always there. But the boots on the ground are our executive administrators and I really thank you. I'm so pleased with the staff that we have, Ms. Baker. And Isame is so smart that I'm glad I didn't go to law school with her because she would have hurt the curve. Wherever she went, she's brilliant and I appreciate all the work that she has done on that contract. Going to the University of Florida issue, I came to this county when IBM was leaving. And this county is noted for high-end technology. Robotics started in Palm Beach County. Robotics, artificial intelligence, and that started the Engineering School at FAU. So, to see this legacy continue with the University of Florida, to me is heartening because it will show that Palm Beach County is, will always be on the map when it comes to technology and really 21st century innovation. So, I want to thank all those, we already thanked you before, but thank you again because this is going to be a real boost for our county and for our students, for our youth, for all of us. And I want to thank Ms. Baker for having the best administrators. I've got them, I'm going to give your cell phone numbers out, but I appreciate you always being there for us and for the quality of education in your staff. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Sacks. Commissioner Kerner, we've been giving you also a lot of accolades today for this UF thing that we just got involved in.
Well, and I won't, again, I won't belabor the point on UF, but I am deeply appreciative to my friends and colleagues on the Board that embraced the vision and supported the vision and it means the world to me. So, thank you. I don't have any comments except with the Mayor's permission, there seems to be two new members from the Clerk and Comptroller's Office that are joining us here on the days today. I was hoping we could have the new folks introduce themselves to the Board.
That would be fine. Someone from the Clerk's Office who's new. Here we go.
New, but new to the dais.
New to the dais.
Testing. My name's Leanna Figaro and I'm the manager for Board Services.
Welcome.
Thank you very much.
That's it?
Good morning, well, good afternoon, everyone. I'm Tony Di Maria and I also support Board Services.
And you kept up with us all day?
I did.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Commissioner McKinley, I'm sorry, I over, I just stepped over you.
That's all right. You sped up my 85 days, apparently. Just kidding. I'd like to request an off-site proclamation declaring September 17th, 2022, as Caribbean American for Community Involvement Day in Palm Beach County.
I have a motion by the Commissioner, seconded by the Vice Mayor. All in favor, all opposed. Show that is approved, six to zero.
Thank you. And then, just my comments, as it being Primary Election Day, I really want to thank our county team and Ms. Link's office. I had the opportunity to visit some of the early polling sites this weekend and also vote myself at one of those locations and the staff was professional and courteous and efficient and it was a really good experience and the changes that she's put into place are appreciated. And would like to thank every poll worker that's out there today, volunteer or paid. Thank you, thank them for their service. Elections have gotten ugly. The process has gotten ugly in recent years and they take a lot of nonsense that they don't deserve. So, their service is appreciated. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. On behalf of the Mayor in District Four, I'd like to ask for a off-site proclamation for National Health Center Week.
I got a second by Commissioner Kerner. All in favor, all opposed. Show that is approved, six to zero.
Thank you. And I just want to follow up on Commissioner Marino's comments on Sergeant Montane and his wife Kami Sue and the good folks at Homes for Our Troops. They raise the money privately to build these homes and they give them to these severely disabled veterans, post-9/11 veterans, at no cost to them. It's an amazing program they have. They build these adaptive homes for folks that are, have come back from serving this country, giving it not only of themselves, but, you know, long-lasting wounds to their bodies and the impact it has to their families. So, it's amazing. The other thing to point out is they get to choose wherever they want to live. They're not required to go anywhere and they choose, a number of them now, I think we're in our fourth or fifth home here in Palm Beach County, that they've chosen to join us in Palm Beach County. So, if you have an opportunity to meet any of them and their, or their family members, be sure to welcome them home to Palm Beach County because they chose us. And then, I also want to, I want to send a shout out to Animal Care and Control. There's, that's a little, a little one that just joined our household. He's, he was pulled from Animal Care and Control by another rescue and he's ended up with us. And that's my wife. She's bottle-feeding him. He's about a week old. So, he's doing great. But I want to thank the people out at Animal Care and Control. We had a medical situation with one of our own animals last week and unfortunately, because of COVID, what was supposed to be scheduled for him got delayed. And so, rather than having to deal with that, my wife took him over to Animal Care and Control and the support and the service that they received was top-notch. And we can't thank the staff there for their compassion and their caring. So, thank you, Animal Care and Control. And then, lastly, just to continue, I'm going to, I'm going to probably harp on this ongoing, but we have the Affordable Connectivity Program that is now available throughout not only Palm Beach County, Florida, and the United States, but if you're receiving benefits, Medicaid, free or reduced lunch, there's a lot of qualified people that'll qualify for it. We believe there's close to 100,000 people in Palm Beach County. You can get free Wi-Fi, or not Wi-Fi, free high-speed internet accessibility through our major providers. You can check their websites, call them up, and they can help get you connected and make sure that you're, you've got broadband at no cost. So, that, those are my comments, sir.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And, you know, it's been nice to be on vacation for a few weeks. I went up to Iceland. There's only 360,000 people up there. It was kind of intimate after leaving this county, but it was really quite a trip and it was on my bucket list and I've checked it off now and really enjoyed just getting away and there was no humidity. I just, you know. You know, we're talking about our nonprofits and certainly, one that I had the privilege of seeing them in action was the Special Spaces of Boca Raton. And what they do is they make a special dream bedroom for children with cancer. And I had the opportunity to see one of those spaces made for a young gentleman who is fighting off cancer. And, you know, we can't do it all up here and I think we are very fortunate. We have so many nonprofits out there that are carrying a lot of the burden of people who need help and it was really something very, very heartwarming to me. Again, what we've done today with UF, I think is going to be something that people can all take, you know, pride in. I think it is a game changer. I think it is going to help, you know, this county, again, be competitive going forward. We know that there is three issues that we need to deal with. One of them, of course, is housing. Another one is transportation and third one is education. And I think that this is going to go a long way to making us even more competitive than we are right now. And finally, I can't stress enough the fact that this is Election Day. A lot of people think, oh, it's a, it's a primary. I don't need to go out. But then they come out to November and say, how did these people get on this ballot? So, if you have not gone to the ballot yet or to the polling place today, today is the day. There is no more time. After 7:00 tonight, it's over. So, please, go to your polling place, make your selection. One of our seats is on that primary election and we certainly want to have everybody have the opportunity to make a decision that is right for our county. And based on that, I think that we can call it a day. So, it is 12:30. Let's all go home. We're adjourned.